Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, September 30, 2013, the last meeting of this council term. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'd move into the agenda and we'd start with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that the minutes of the city council meeting held September 16, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to catch before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and we'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of 9.9 Hillside Social Housing Project.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. So, a motion for the adoption of the agenda with that additional item that came from our council committee the whole meeting just prior to this city council meeting. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries as well. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda, the last delegation portion of our council term. It looks like it's going to be a good one. We did have some folks that had let us know that they were going to be here ahead of time and the first on our list is the Honorable Wayne Drysdale, Minister of Infrastructure and MLA for Grand Prairie Wapiti. Wayne, if you'd like to join us here. Welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
And as usual, thank you for this opportunity to address council. I think it's a good opportunity for me to hear the concerns of council and to give you a brief update on what's going on. I've always appreciated the opportunity to work with this council and not just on our yearly visits, but throughout the year, pretty regularly, we meet with everybody and work together quite well and thank you very much for that. And also, seeing the election is coming up and this will be the last council meeting for some members here, I want to thank you for your dedication and hard work to our community and our city over the last term. I know some of you won't be back for sure, maybe some of you won't be back for other reasons. Thanks for those who've dedicated themselves and congratulations on a term well-served. And also, thanks for you that are putting your name forward to run again. All the best and be looking forward on the election night to the results. Thanks very much for stepping up, serve your community. I'll just maybe do a few quick updates and then open it up for questions. That's usually the best part anyway.
Sure, please.
I mean, I think everybody has heard the financial situation of the province has been a little strained in the last few years, but first quarter update this year, things are looking better. I mean, it's too early to get excited and start thinking we have extra money because, you know, we all depend on the oil price in this province and that can go up and down pretty regularly. So, although things are looking good today, we'll hope that keeps going throughout the year and we'll be in good shape. You know, we always have to live within our means and we're doing that even though we'd like to do lots more in the province, we still have to be fiscal responsible and we're trying to make that, strike that balance the best we can going forward. You know, I think you've seen this year, we are going to borrow some money for our infrastructure spending. Just the other day, the province hit 4 million people, so it's growing fast and with all that growth, we need more schools and hospitals and two, the days of paying cash out front for everything for the next 30 years are probably behind us for a while anyway, so we'll only borrow for important capital infrastructure going forward as needed. You know, that being said, we were in a good position, but we had a major disaster not about 100 days ago now or something this spring that's going to put a strain on our budget, but you know, we did have money set aside in our stability account and we'll use that to offset the floods. I mean, it's going to draw it down low, but I just, you know, want to assure the rest of Albertans that we're not going to be taking away from our infrastructure plan for the whole province to make up for this disaster. We had a capital plan before that and we're sticking to our original capital plan and we'll still be building Alberta for all Albertans and we'll see our way through this disaster. Albertans have pulled together good as we always do and I'm sure we'll meet this challenge and we'll prevail through it. You know, probably one of the more important infrastructure builds for this city is our schools right now. I mean, aside the hospital, which was already announced, but the schools, the premier committed to building 15 new schools and 70 modernizations. This spring, we announced three schools for this region, you know, we announced 30 schools, three in this region and we expect to have some more announcements later this fall. You know, with our growth and especially in this city, it's grown, you know, Alberta's growing, but I think Grand Prairie is leading the way and so schools are always under pressure, so we've had a high demand for modulators. We've moved 17 modulators into the city this fall, so just to try and get us through till the new schools are built. I think, you know, we've had some changes in our health system, restructuring earlier this spring. The board was removed and then just lately now, the minister announced with Janet Davidson the restructuring and taking it from 80 VPs or seniors down to 10. So, we're restructuring and trying to get as much, much of our concentration and our resources to the frontline as possible and cut back on upper management. Grand Prairie Hospital's going quite well. I toured there this morning and I know you can't see much from the road now, but there's a lot of work going. There's two stories underground that you can't see. There's a pile of concrete and steel down there already and pretty soon now, we'll see the, you'll start to see the first floor coming out of the ground. We'll have, you know, this spring, that first section will have four floors above the ground by spring, so it'll start to take shape here pretty soon over the winter. I was really happy just, you know, a week or two ago, I guess we received approval from the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission for permission for the radiation vaults there for the cancer thing. You know, we assumed all along we were getting, but it's nice to have that approval in hand and so they're started on the cancer vaults now and that'll be a major part of the new hospital. So, things are going quite well there. They tell me on schedule and on budget, but we'll see, there's a long ways to go before it's done. And maybe I just would have been pretty impressed the last while driving around the city, some of the new paving you've got done, you know, maybe we're not going to get caught like we did last winter. It looks like you're going to be more prepared. There's a lot of new paving contracts just finished in the last while and makes the streets a lot better. I'm sure there's always lots more to do. I know how that goes, but just wanted to pass on a good job, well-done. Things are, things are looking good and with that, I'll maybe open it for questions.
Thanks very much, Mr. Drysdale. Questions for Mr. Drysdale? Questions, comments? Councillor Rice.
In the next year, discussions on new funding formula for the MSI will be going forward?
Well, that's an ongoing discussion. I mean, every budget, we deal with that and, you know, the plan was to increase that as we go forward and of course, as I said, we have a budget to manage and stay within our means, but that's hopeful, the plan to keep slowly increasing that MSI budget. We did have our first meeting with the federal minister on the Build Canada Fund. I was, you know, I don't have a whole lot to report yet. They've come out with their, you know, we had a really brief meeting and their discussion and it just was presented to us and so I think he plans on talking with municipalities and FCM and it's just the start of it and don't really have any answers yet, but I'm glad to see that process moving along.
I do see a few people in the queue for you. Councillor Gustafson.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Wayne, can you tell us, is there anything on the, on the books for the future of Highway 43 North bypass around the continuation of the bypass around the northwest corridor of the city?
Well, it was on the three-year capital plan. I mean, our financial situation has kept it at the back end of that, but you know, I was expecting till we finish the twinning through the Sturgeon Lake area there, I think that'll be the next project after that and the first section, the pavement is finished now, they're just waiting for the contractor to paint the lines. I was hoping it would have been open yesterday when I come home, but, so that'll be done any day now and once the lines are painted, we'll use that first section and the second or the last piece there, the contractor's done really well on the grade this year. He hoped to get the grade done this year and I think he's going to do it and then he'll have, he has to have it paved by this time next year, so it looks like it's on schedule to be totally finished by this time next year and then I hope the next project will be the 43X bypass. I know they've pretty well bought all the land and completed the negotiations on that part, so it's just about ready to go.
Thanks, Wayne. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to say thank you, Wayne, for coming. Every year in this, my first term, you've been here every year to speak to council and I think that's very, speaks very highly of you. You're a very good MLA and a very good MLA for Wapiti constituency. Just a question that Councillor Gustafson brought up was 43X, the overpass, like it's been, I don't know, a decade, it's been built for quite a while and it's big contention up north in this area of the Peace Country to get that built and done and get the route around, so I really hope it's on the radar and not a five, 10 more year radar because a lot of people come back and forth and say, well, Edmonton and Calgary are getting off and this overpass hasn't been built for a lot of years, so that's a big one.
Councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, thank you, Wayne, again. I was part of that 43X also, but I, I have my morning meetings at NW and I continually get attacked on 116th Avenue and Highway 43. The corner there is about 42,000 vehicles go on that and it's, there's some trenches in there that I know it's not your personal responsibility, but just kind of wanted to highlight that traffic that is going through and I see some two, $3 million trucks from Alaberton and Trican and whatever, they're instrument trucks and they hit those, I was beside one the other day with my 98-year-old mother. She thought they might be coming in and I said, no, I can, I can avert that myself. Just to kind of put that on the, maybe a little on the radar screen. Another thank you for the, for the lights that we're going to be getting at the airport. This is a regional airport. We serve all the communities in Alberta and BC and it's a very high traffic corner and thank goodness, there's been no accidents and with the lights, there will of course be hopefully never an accident there. So, thank you again for widening of the road and, and the lights there.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any other questions, comments for Emily Drysdale? Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Wayne, thanks again for coming this evening. Pleased to chat with you. Do you have a Mutual Government Act review update for us? Tell us, people might be interested and those watching, kind of what the process looks like and where you're at with it.
Well, I'm, I'm not directly involved in that and so probably your mayor and some others know about as much as I do because, you know, they're in the consultation process right now with, well, and Councillor Rice probably knows, they've been consulting with AUMA and AMDNC and it's a big act and it's going to be, you know, a couple of years probably before it's finished and so to say where it's at, it's well underway and there's discussions going on and, you know, I guess you have your opportunity for input as a council and through, through Councillor Rice, so I think your voice will be well-heard there and they'll support you, but it's a big act, lots of work and it's well underway for sure.
Well, it's a potential to change the landscape of how we do things in Alberta and so I'm pleased to see that everybody's engaged. I know we have been and our mayor has been and Helen has been, so yeah, we're looking forward to the outcomes. Thank you.
It's important.
See, Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Wayne, thank you very much for coming to council tonight. I just want to thank you again for the support in the electric lights at the airport. There's a number of us that are on the airport commission. The city has approached the government over the last three years for sure and the airport itself and I'll be looking forward to having to stop at a red light.
Yeah, I believe the tender's awarded now, so it's up to the contractor. Hopefully, you can get some work done in this whole area.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. Wayne, if I could, just a quick thank you for your support in this region's lobbying for schools. We've mentioned obviously the, the hospital and the lights at the airport, but recognize also that you're a voice and an advocate for the need for schools in the city of Grand Prairie. Certainly appreciate that and we're hopeful about future news as the summer wears, or the fall wears on. You mentioned Build Canada. Council, you'll receive formal communication from the city, but council had made a motion at a recent meeting to forward the city of Grand Prairie's position on to you so that when you discuss with your federal colleagues that you'd have that. The city's position is that we'd like to look for a per capita allocation and an allocation basis rather than a competitive basis. Build Canada previously was one pot of money everybody put in their applications and maybe win, maybe lose and the city's position is that we'd like to see something that's more predictable and more sustainable and that we could budget for. And so, you'll see formal communication on that, but just while we have you here, there's no better way to deliver that message than face-to-face. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to do that. The other one was the Young Offenders Centre. You have received a request from us and I don't know if your department has had a chance to review that request for disposal of the Young Offenders Centre and I don't know if you're in a position to state where that request is at.
Yeah, I just got to be careful. We did deal with that at the Treasury Board. I took it forward, but I guess obviously you haven't got the letter yet, so I'll be careful, but I think I can officially say that we approved the transfer for a dollar and you should be getting a letter saying that, but maybe don't put that in the media or I'll have my Treasury Board ask.
I'm sure, I'm sure the media just heard that and I'm sure they won't say anything. They're well-known for.
Nobody will tell them about it. They did split it because it is a large lot, so you know, to, to, to give you the facility for a dollar, some of my colleagues thought we could subdivide the lot and sell the bare lot and then give you the sender and the land for a dollar, but we can have some discussions about that.
So, there's, that's fantastic news. Thank you very much for your support in that and it's great to hear.
Hopefully, I don't get into too much trouble.
We'll look for the formal communications. Thank you. I don't know if anybody else had anything else for Minister Drysdale. Wayne, I think it was said before, but I certainly want to add my thanks. In my time on council, I don't believe I remember another MLA coming on an annual basis to city council to report on the activities and to take questions like this. So, thank you very much for doing that and thanks for your commitment to our community. We certainly noticed and appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we had one other delegation on our printed agenda and we will make time, make sure that everybody that wanted to speak has an opportunity, but we had one other that is in our printed delegation and Mr. Lacousta, Al, if you could join us at the presenter's table. It's not often where council requests a delegation, but given that the term is ending, please just have a seat, Al. We thought it would be appropriate. The city of Grand Prairie has been a longtime supporter of the Pipestone Creek Dinosaur Museum Project and now the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum and previous councils and this council have made financial commitments to that project because we recognize that it's going to be a fantastic resource for our entire region and certainly a fantastic resource for the future of our community. But we all also know that the dinosaur bears your name, being the person who discovered it way back when, we won't sort of speak to dates, but some time ago. And at the sod turning, the official sod turning for the museum earlier this summer, the city of Grand Prairie received a shovel, an official shovel as a funder for the $3 million towards the project and council discussed and thought it was highly appropriate that the person that would have that shovel would be you, given your involvement in the project. And so, we wanted to invite you here today so that we could present you officially with the city of Grand Prairie's official groundbreaking shovel. We hope that you would keep it as a memento of museum and your involvement in the project. So, thank you so much and if you'd like to come up, and I don't know if Doreen would like to come up, then we can share, share this and so. Al, do you want to say a few words before we have you come up?
Yes, this is quite an honor to receive that. I do take responsibility for finding the bone bed. As you all know, the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum is being constructed as we speak and it will house amongst other things, a number of new dinosaur species that were discovered in the area. And it is that that I believe will be responsible for quite an increase of tourism in Grand Prairie and everything associated with it. Grand Prairie's a dynamic city and it's a negative more so. And it's a great city. I came here in 1969 intending to stay here for two years and you're aware.
The two-year plan like everybody else. Well, Al, thank you so much. We're so glad that you did come to Grand Prairie. We're glad that you stayed more than two years and it's certainly an honor to be able to present you with this, well, I suppose technically it's a $3 million shovel. But I'll come around and I'll present that to you. Thanks very much, Mr. Lacousta, obviously for your involvement in the project and the discovery of the bone bed and thanks for making your way here tonight for that little, little gift and presentation. Thank you. So, this is still the delegation portion of our agenda. Every city council meeting has a delegation portion and it's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and speak, speak on any community-related matter. I am aware that there may be some delegations related to the Derek Taylor School and so certainly want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak if they wish, but would ask delegations, if you have a relatively similar comment to somebody else, maybe if there's somebody that can speak on behalf of a group or if you'd just like to highlight that you agree with what the previous speaker said, that would probably make it easier on everybody, but certainly want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak if they, if they choose, if you could just try to limit your comments as best as possible. So, I will open the floor. If somebody would like to raise their hand and come forward, then you're, we're all going to come, come forward and speak, please. So, when you come up, just identify yourself for the recording secretary and ensure that who you are, what point of view you're representing, your concern, and, and we'll, we'll move from there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Noel Roberts and I'm a resident of Mission Heights.
Mike Walsh, resident of Mission Heights.
Mayor Given and council and Minister Drysdale, if you're still here. Thanks very much for the opportunity to, to speak to you this evening regarding the Derek Taylor parking lot issue that I just became aware of recently. As I mentioned, I'm a longtime resident of Grand Prairie, not quite up to Mr. Lacousta's, but my two-year plan has got me here in 17 years, so we're well on our way there. My kids actually attend Derek Taylor School as well. Just recently, I became aware of a proposed parking lot on the north end of the school and associated access road to it. I guess from my perspective, I'm concerned about the proposed parking area on two fronts. There's been a perceived lack of communication, I believe, from the school board in terms of describing what the plans will be in that area and from that stems my concern regarding the increased traffic flow within the subdivision as a result of where this parking lot is likely to be situated. From my perspective, what I would like to do is respectfully ask council to provide some flexibility to the permit that's already been granted to the school board to allow for two things to occur, just in terms of, of looking at the, the current location of where that permit is or where the parking lot will actually be located and also to provide some flexibility to allow the modular units that Minister Drysdale already had alluded to to be opened without having the parking lot in place. I think, I think what would that, that would do is it would achieve two outcomes, at least for, for me personally. Number one, it would, it would allow the students of Derek Taylor to actually move into their classrooms, into the modulators from the, from the gymnasium that they're currently in, which is certainly from a parent's standpoint, a move in the right direction. And number two, provide enough time for the school board to adequately assess all options regarding locating that parking lot. I know there are probably some potential areas that could be utilized with respect to the existing parking lot on the south side of the school that, that I believe should be looked into with, with greater scrutiny. So, from my perspective, that would be the two asks I would have of, of council on that matter.
Okay. Thanks very much. Mr. Walsh.
I just like to say, the wife and a few other members around the, around the street, they polled our residents and proceeded to get about 60, 60 signatures, all basically opposing the placement of the parking lot. I guess, I'm not quite as graceful, but I guess I'd like to say, I pointed out the lack of communication plan and all the city management mentioned a communication plan earlier. I'm assuming that's on the to-do list since it didn't happen this time. So, it'd be nice to have the people affected informed and not, not just the decision made here. There is a potential for safety concerns like Noel mentioned, the increased traffic. There's lots of local children playing a role and also, I don't know if there's even enough room for emergency services to locate. It'd be hard to say. I'm not sure what you guys, what you guys investigated, but it'd be nice to hear your side.
Okay. So, I did, I do see some folks in the queue for questions. I believe we received a note that Mr. Lerner's from the Grand Prairie Public School Board would speak to this issue as well and so it was certainly will give him an opportunity. I think this is the first that we've heard about it at the council table. We were married aware that there would be a delegation coming, but, so this is the first that council's really hearing about it at this level and I think it's important to recognize that ultimately the public school board is the developer of the property and they certainly do that in accordance with the city's land use bylaw and requirements, but it is the school board that is the developer. So, I do see those, some questions from council for you, so Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Noel, Mike, for coming out. Just two questions. How old is Derek Taylor School? Six years or seven?
Seven.
Five, six years? I'm just wondering, is the modular unit bigger than the school there now? I went to an open house there and I was just surprised just how big it is there. I mean, it's just amazing what's been going on around here and our youth, so I know it's off the question, but they're looking at another route because of modulators and the school isn't very old and I think the modulators are almost as big as the school.
Yeah, I wouldn't know the, the actual number of students that would be in the modulators versus the actual school itself, but there, there is a number of modulators that are there. In terms of the, the parking lot requirements, the ask is for somewhere in the order, I believe. believe, about 16 parking stalls thereabouts. And there, again, when you look at the footprint of the school in relation to where the existing infrastructure and parking lots are, there's probably some additional options that should be investigated by the school board as well.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions for the delegation. So, gentlemen, thanks very much for the presentation. I think there may be others that want to speak to the issue, and then ultimately, council deals with delegation business at the end of our agenda. So, we'll go through and listen to anybody that wants to speak on this issue, and then we continue on through the rest of our agenda. And if there's a motion or direction coming out of your presentation today, it'd be towards the end of our agenda. So, you can either stick around and enjoy the entire exciting meeting, or you can watch online at home, see it archived, or administration could contact you with some follow-up. So, I'll leave that to you, but as I said, I understand that Mr. Lerner's is here and may have some information from the school board, so.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Lerner, as I see you there, if you'd care to join us and share some information from the school board perspective?
Well, I can't make you feel bad, Mayor Given, because as of until about a day or so ago, I too was unaware of the situation. Some of these permits get issued during the summer, especially with the portables, because of the way things last a little longer, and in the summertime, the school boards are a little bit like Sleepy Hollow, so they try not to do too much. Anyway, here and there, it has been an active day or so, and we've been on the blower with the city and with the folks here in the neighborhood, trying to figure out some kind of solution. And I think the solution that Noel was proposing is consistent with what we're trying to do there. We can't guarantee that we're going to find a better spot. There's some initial indications are that we can fit something in, and we think we can get it. Either way, it's my understanding that what we are planning to construct is temporary, but temporary tends to lead towards permanent, so we're trying to avoid kind of creating a situation like that. So, I think if, you know, I think the first condition that they're asking for is already been dealt with, because I think the students are moving in tomorrow, and the parking lot's not finished. So, either someone's allowing that to happen, or a blind eye, one or the other. Either way, we appreciate that. As for the second one, we're prepared to move forward. I know infrastructure in this case, as usual, doing an absolutely wonderful job is going to fund as part of the modulators summer, most of that parking lot, so we're pretty excited. And I'm able to find a little more time, because Wayne Drysdale cleared up my schedule for the last, for the next three, four years. So, we've got lots of time now to concentrate on school board trust. Again, thank you very much for that, Wayne. I really appreciate that. That was excellent. So, anyway, yeah, I'm fully supportive of what Noel and the folks there are trying to do, and open to any questions that people may have.
Any questions for Mr. Drysdale? A few came into the queue. Councilor Kropen.
Actually, not for Mr. Drysdale.
Sorry, Mr. Lerner. Wayne just got so much airtime in that presentation.
Thanks a lot for coming down. Has there been any kind of exploration of maybe a site where people could drive to, either on the Knowledge Center? I know the east link isn't used, like, there's probably lots of parking there for the, you know, nine to three period. Is there any idea or any talk about having a shuttle? I know everybody comes from different areas, and they each need a vehicle to drive, but I'm just thinking of a, try and relieve some of that pressure if everybody could stop somewhere at eight o'clock and take a bus over.
Yeah, well, we're kind of lucky in that sense. I think we're going to be short about 10 or 12 stalls once the new Isabel Campbell School gets opened up and all those, that big plethora of modulators kind of dissipates into, well, probably move to another spot in Grand Prairie, but so I think we're only looking for about 10 or 12 spots there. We're kind of really lucky that the K-9 kids, on most part, can't drive, and so they got a few parents dropping them off. But if they can drive, we have a problem in the education system that we need to deal with. But for the most part, I think we're pretty good that way. I think if we can get another 15 or 20 stalls kind of around the existing peripheral parking, I think we'll be good. And I think that's been a long-term problem in the area, is the people of, since the beginning of that subdivision, it's always been a bit of a tough thing to deal with. And Christine Donnelly was very quick to point out this afternoon that John Laners, you designed that subdivision 15 years ago, so this is your problem. So, I am duty-bound to fix it, and so I will do what I can.
Thank you. As city councillor, of course, safety is of utmost importance, and we've got little darlings running in there to do their work, and they don't really care where the cars are.
Absolutely.
diligence on it for us. Thanks, John.
I see Councilor Rice.
John, just to make sure we're on the same page, okay? There were two requests. You said you agree with both of them. One is to move the kids into the portables tomorrow.
Correct.
And the second is?
The second is that, right now, in my world with development permits, and I haven't actually seen the development permit, but typically, they identify where the parking's going to be, and they're fairly, you know, when it gets down that path, they kind of decide this is where it has to be, and this is, you know, you kind of meet that clause, right? And what I'm just saying is, let's just take a deep breath here, and we're not saying we don't want the parking, but we just want to have some flexibility to figure out where the best body, because right now, it's everything, the portable, everything's been so rushed, and I think that's, it was everybody just said, well, that's the quickest solution, and that's the easiest solution, and I don't think that's necessarily the best solution. Not guaranteeing that it will be, but we're, you know, hopefully that we can move it, but it will allow us a little bit of time to talk to the neighbors and the folks and see what makes sense, and for the school a little bit more, what makes more sense. And so, yeah, I just don't want the development permit to kind of take precedence over what's common sense for that area, so.
So, you're not going to proceed with the parking lot at this time?
Well, if, you know, if we could come up with a solution in the next week, we have an idea, and if principals and parents and a few other odds and ends can all make sense of it, and we can grab the attention of the Wapides or the Canellsons or whoever and get them out there, we may very well have some parking this year. I'm hoping we will. I'm confident or thinking that we can, but.
So, what if it was on the south side, as they mentioned?
Yeah, you still have to do something there. So, that's, you know, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if we can get that done this fall or not, but hopefully, hopefully we can. I'll just have to bug Dan over at Bearstall Laners, catch them engineering, and make sure that they, you know, good job and get that done.
And, John, I guess one of the things I heard is the lack of communication, and you're saying that that's because it was summer, but you're, it's the intent of the school board to plug that hole.
Yeah, I think so. Oh, not I think so. We will do it. I think we're meeting that right now. We move it to the parking lot situation, I'm not sure if that'll be, if that'll rile the neighbors up. I'm thinking that for a long time, the neighbors have said, we need more parking there, get off my streets, please, kindly, and so this will do that as well, too, if we can make something work over there. And there's a bit of room there, but, you know, everybody has an interest, so we'll have to figure that out, too.
One more, if I can. I guess I heard the service road was a concern.
The service road.
Did I not hear that?
Not sure. They are internal subdivision roads, so I don't know if there's service roads per se. Maybe I misunderstood, but maybe that was the issue. But there are some, there's an internal subdivision road, that that's where they've been coming off of, that's the plan of this permit, and I'm not, and I think the thinking is there that it's not really designed for, it's more for local traffic, not a whole bunch of excess traffic, so maybe, I think that's what Noel was referring to. I could be wrong.
Okay, thank you. I see Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. John, just a quick question. I'm glad you're looking at Noel, Mike, and the parents of, because I believe they're correct. I was just at that school the other day. How old is the school? That one first question.
Oh, you were going to ask me that question. I'm going to go six years. Seven years? 10? 10.
What is it?
Seven.
Oh, there you go.
1006 and 7. Laura would know.
Six, seven years? And, okay, so.
Seven years old.
Seven years old. So, school's pretty new.
Bet.
And what percentage of the modulators taking up that school area right now?
In terms of?
For children.
Well, I would say we have probably 40 to 50% of our kids in modulators.
Okay, I appreciate answering that, because we're the youngest city in Canada, and I've said it before, in McGowanville, about children under five, more than over 65, so really hoping in the future, some more different planning goes to building schools for actually, for growth, because you always hear excuses, and it's been excuses for many years, and that place there is how it's gone. I don't know. Maybe you're planning the modulators will get less, or they're going to get more with the new school in Pinnacle, but something's gone wrong there.
Yeah, it is, it is tough, and we, it's just a high-growth area, and, you know, I think when it was built, I don't think the expectation that Pinnacle and all those other areas would take off like they did. But it is, it's like, schools are a little like accordions, and, you know, they get built to a certain stage, and then they have to have all these modulators, and then you get another school. And it just, it has to do with utilization factors and the benevolence of the Minister of Infrastructure and those folks out there, depending on when they can fit all that in. So, it is, it is tough. If I had, if I said our biggest issue that we have by far without question is infrastructure, and it's unfortunate, right now, infrastructure is driving our education decisions, and that is a real problem for us. And I know the governments have a hard time funding all that stuff, and there's pressure points, but, and so, you know, everybody has their world to deal with, but our world is infrastructure. And when you, when the council's here advocating for schools, that's just music to my ears, because really, that is, that is huge. You know, we, I always tell people, we have, just in our public system, forgetting about our sister, but we get about 400 kids, you know, last year in our schools. City of Edmonton got about 1,000 new kids in there, and they're 20 times bigger than us, you know? And so, then they have some empty schools in the middle, and they can play and bus and do all the things that you're talking about. We don't have that luxury. Every school we have, you know, our kids are with their cheeks up to the glass, you know? And so, we're trying to do the best we can. Kids are still kids, and they make do, and they probably don't even know any better, but we know better, and so we need to do better, and we'll continue to knock on Wayne's door, and he's been very good with us, and so we'll keep on pushing, but that is our biggest issue. I can't agree with you more.
Thank you, John.
I see Councilor Wong.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So, John, just want to make sure I heard correctly that the school boards are consulting with all the residents to make sure that you can work out a solution with, that takes in account the needs of the school as well as all the surrounding residents.
Yeah, it might be a little premature to say that we're talking to all the residents. I think we've got discontinuance and how we communicate with that, and we'll have to figure out, you know, we'll do the tummy test and figure out what everybody feels is, you know, unnecessary to make this go, while still being a little bit expedient. Like, I still want to get parking in there, I still want to get the schools open, but, you know, if they can figure out a way of, you know, communicating, and if there's a couple of other people that may get affected, maybe we've got to knock on a few doors and have a couple coffees to see if we can do that. But, you know, if we move that from there, I think, from that side, I think most of these people are satisfied, I think. I don't know if there's anybody here coming to support that temporary parking tonight, but if there are, then they can put their hand. But generally speaking, so there's a few people, maybe around the peripheral of the new parking lot, the old parking lot, rather, that may have concerns, and we just, maybe we have to talk with them, but, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's.
Sounds like you're making an effort.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions for you. So, John, thanks very much for the clarity about what the school board is doing, and the fact that the students are going to be moving into the portables without the parking lot being installed. That's one major issue. Okay? Thanks very much, John, for being here. Councilor Rice, one of the last word?
Christine, like, so, I guess I've heard John saying, hold up on this permit, don't, like, allow some flexibility in this permit, and I guess, are we doing that? Like, is that?
I'm going to direct that to administration.
Okay.
So, the development permit has been issued, and I think what we're talking about is working with the public school board to amend that permit, and I think that we're, city administration is more than happy to sit down and look at the different options and see if we can work up some solution that is more acceptable to the neighborhood.
And that doesn't delay them unduly.
Correct. So, next week, or this, later this week?
Yeah, since it's Monday later this week, probably.
Thanks very much, Ms. Donnelly. Thanks very much, John. So, we've managed to hear from the school board, I think that was helpful. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Please, as we did with everybody else, come down, just introduce yourself so we know who you are, and you can speak to council.
My name is Darlene Madash, and I'm a concerned parent that lives on the proposed loop, no-exit loop, that this parking lot is supposed to go on the end of. This amendment or whatever, this permit, I think that's a great idea. I would like to see this parking lot held off until such time as the residents on this no-exit loop can be heard. I mean, we only found out about this a week, this last week. My own two children go to Derrick Taylor School. I realize it's a busy school. I realize there are tons of kids there. It's the same at every school here in Grand Prairie. Being that we live on this no-exit loop, there is one entrance and one exit into it. They need to build an access road off of the end of our crescent in order to get into this parking lot. Most of us that have bought houses in this crescent, bought them there because it is a low-traffic area. It's a nice, safe crescent. Yes, it's beside the schools. It was never in the plans when we originally bought these properties here that there would be a parking lot at the end of it, and that this traffic would be increased. Now, I have nothing against a parking lot going in. I have everything against not being notified of one going, or trying to put one in at the end of our crescent. This rushing it and wanting to put a temporary one in a week doesn't exactly appease me either. I think that's pushing it a little fast for us residents that live there to have a choice or a voice in changing it. In our crescent alone, we have about 30 children that live in that crescent alone, that walk to either Ceteri or Derrick Taylor School off the end of our crescent. Now, the other day, I sat and watched, had the luxury of watching, how many kids actually walk into our crescent down that street and to either school with the safety of the fact that it is a no-exit loop with low traffic. There's 50 of them, just that I counted one morning alone, that walk through that school, through that, through our street, from all surrounding areas, even to walk to St. Joe's that go through there. To me, it's a safety issue, and as it is, we already have parents that sneak into our loop and park on the end to drop kids off in the morning, pick kids up in the afternoon or drop them off in the afternoon for kindergarten, and pick them up at the end of the day. Now, all of a sudden, when we're trying to back out of our driveway in the morning, we've got an extra 16 vehicles. We already have the 10 or so of the parents that drop their kids off now that we tolerate. We've asked for lower speed signs in our loop. We've asked for speed bumps in our loop. Have we gotten anything back on that? No. So, we have to deal with the problem. You guys don't. You deal with the issue, you put it in, and we deal with the problem. Now, do our property taxes go down because of the traffic that goes in here? Our street might get snow removal more often, but you know what? I'd rather do without the parking lot and handle the snow than the traffic, for my kids' safety, for the surrounding kids' safety, for the pet's safety alone. Another issue I have, and I'm hoping I'm speaking for a lot of the residents that are here behind me, is who's going to monitor this parking lot? Is it open for public? Is it open for just teachers? Is there going to be proper signage? Is there going to be proper monitoring of this parking lot to make sure that it is still a safe environment if this goes in? So, as you can see, there is lots of concerns, lots of issues, and we're realistically very upset at finding out a week about this, and there's gravel already in there. Like, I'm sorry, what the heck just happened? You know, it's, I think it's very unfair how this came about. I know Grand Prairie is a great city to live in. I've been here for almost 12 years now. It's grown dramatically. I like the stuff that's going on in it. I like the buildings, and I like the sportsplex and the multiplex and the schools and the way it's growing. I just think that the, and as the city council, I mean, it's your guys' job to watch out for the residents' interests as well as the city's growth. And the communication on this was atrocious. And the communication on this was atrocious. So I think that's all I have to say.
Thanks very much.
Can't think of anything else right now.
Thanks very much for the presentation. As I said at the outset, I just want to clarify that the city of Grand Prairie isn't developing a parking lot. It's actually the public school board that's developing the parking lot. And so.
But the city issued the permit.
And this is and this is the first that this permit, because it is within the land use law, so it was is an allowed development. So this is the first that your city council's hearing about this. And so we appreciate the fact that you had the opportunity to come tonight and we'll get a chance to deal with it tonight.
I hope so.
Great. Thank you very much for coming. I don't, oh, I see Counselor McClain, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Darlene, when was this asked for a lower speed limit? Because I haven't gone all the way down that road. I've just gone into the school and out. When was the ask made? And is it fifty so far past and you your community would like it to be thirty or forty?
I phoned myself last year. Actually, I I have phoned a few times with my concerns, especially when I first moved here and my children were smaller on that street. And they used to have football practice at the end. And all of the football kids would come flying out of there after practice. I said, can we not get a, can we not get a speed sign on this street saying, you know, children at play? Because it's an open park at that end, or at least it is right now, that there should be, should have been, some form of sign. We are right beside the two schools, even though we're on that no-exit loop. Should there not be a speed limit sign there? And they said, oh, you can put one up. You can put one up on your yard that says, children at play, please slow down, or whatever. Yeah, you know what? Even myself as the driver, if I see a personal sign put up there versus a an authentic legal sign, what I'm going to think about that? I mean, yes, I'm going to take it into consideration, but am I going to abide by it? No.
Just, I want to throw, I really like your idea about the speed slowing down in that area. And maybe all the neighborhoods get together and have a petition and bring it forward. And I think it would be a good step forward.
I don't see anybody else in the in the queue for you, Ms. Madash. Thanks very much for coming tonight and presenting.
Thank you.
For you being here. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and present to counsel on this issue? Anybody else that had a perspective that they wanted to share? Because if, okay, you weren't getting up. Come on down. Come on down. And same as previously, just introduce yourselves so that we've got your name.
My name's John Dory. I live over in that little loop over there. I agree pretty much with everything she had to say, but I'd just like to emphasize the fact that what concerns me is the traffic and the children there, because there's all kinds of children over there, playing in the playground, they're coming in and out of there. And we do have a playground sign there, thirty kilometers an hour, but it rarely gets it here, too. Like, just, there's always traffic coming through there. I think if you put a parking lot in there, people will come in, they're going to see the parking lot's full or whatever, that's extra traffic, you're going to find whatever place to park again. So then you're blocking our streets again. And like the moms, they drop their kids off, pick them up in the afternoon. Everybody knows it's a short-term deal, they're there for a few minutes and they're gone. Otherwise, that loop, you can hardly get around in that loop, never mind trying to get out of your driveway. And nobody gave us any kind of notice. I don't know if they have to or they're supposed to, but we should have been informed that this was going on. I looked at my back door the other night and I just seen them starting to dump gravel beside my place. So that's the first I found out about it. And then some of the neighbors started to get together, talking about this, what's going on, and this is where we're at now.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Thanks very much for your presentation. I don't see anybody in the queue with question or comments. Thanks very much for coming, making yourself available. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? Come forward. Welcome.
My name is Riel Bat. I've been a resident since about one year before the school was built. Just to add to the rest of the residents' concerns, we're not opposed to a parking lot. I guess our biggest concern is that the lack of notification, lack of consultation. I think any one of you, if if you had a road that was to be built beside your place, you would at least want to be consulted. I think that's the city's due diligence. As apart with the with the development permit holder as well, it's not just the city's fault. Just to add also to the parking lot, I know I live just right straight across from the parking lot. A lot of people talk about the parents that drop their their children off, come back to pick them up. My big concern is with an unsupervised parking lot, just with it being on the backside of the school hidden, there's no supervision. I know with, it happened to me last year. I was shoveling my driveway in the middle of winter, very cold. I looked across the street and I see a little girl, and she's waiting there. Kind of wait, okay. Well, her mom must be running a little bit late. It was probably about a good half an hour prior to. I went out, came back, noticed she's still there, asked her, you know, is there, you know, can you like to come in, use the phone? You know, just because of the lack of supervision and I'm not sure what happened with the parent, but just with that lack of supervision on a on a parking lot or anything like that, I think it really has to be looked at very seriously. Also, with with the parking concern, I know we can all sit and and look and decide, you know, calculate numbers and figure out how much parking you need. We looked today. Case in point, went to the school, physically looked at what is required for parking. There was four stalls that were available. So I'm just concerned, is this actually needed? I know they talk about a temporary, sixteen stalls being required for temporary use. There was four today. Whether or not that's like that the whole time, I don't I don't know. But I think this just needs to be looked at a little bit further. We as residents are very concerned about the speed, that the way that this was being implemented. And I'd like to thank mayor and council for hearing our concerns.
Thanks very much for coming forward and thanks for sharing it. I don't see, oh, I do see, actually, Counselor Wong. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Maybe not so much a question, but just a comment, since we do have our Minister of Infrastructure here in M L A for the city. These are the type of issues that we can see people are passionate about. But, you know, we have a school here that was built for right around four hundred students and now is handling almost double that because of all the modulars there, which means staff is pretty much doubled at that location. And thankfully, the province has has budgeted to build another school on the south side of the city to relieve some of that pressure. So maybe we are looking at a temporary situation, but I'd like Wayne Drysdale over there just to hear that we do need more schools in the city. Otherwise, these kind of situations are going to continue to crop up as we add modulars there. So please take that message back to your college colleagues at the ledge. And thank you for the support for the for the new school, because that's really going to help these people.
Thanks, Counselor Wong.
Thank you.
I have a feeling that wasn't exactly a question for you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and address counsel on this matter? Want to make sure that everybody felt that all of the issues were covered and all the perspectives were covered. As I said, council will will deal with issue 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 towards the end of our agenda. And so you are more than welcome to stay. I don't think it's a particularly long agenda if you want to stay and see how it's dealt with. But if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak on this issue, by all means, we have the opportunity. I'll give you I'll give you a chance to consider that. And I will say that this is still the delegation portions where anybody can come forward to speak to any issue. I see some, sure, come on forward. Sure. Come on up.
I am Glenn Watson. I'm one of the neighbors in that area. Again, I just found out about this last night. So obviously, there's some of the people, our neighborhood, have all got together and stuff like that. But again, it's just, you know, we already talked about the timing and people getting to know this. But, I mean, even when you come onto that one oh six off the, I guess, Michael Street going down, there is a blind corner there and, I mean, we get more traffic. It's it is a concern for people leaving that area. I mean, we just had a serious accident, you know, fatality in Edmonton. And obviously, we don't need that in our area, too. So just that it is, you know, that corner, it is blind going in, turning into our street, too. So, I mean, that is a effect of to have a look at. And snow removal, I mean, I mean, we probably had it maybe one or twice twice this year. And, you know, if we have all this traffic going through, I mean, we have more snow removal, I guess. But, I mean, it's just that it is a concern. A lot of other people are, you know, I bought this, I bought our place seven years ago because it was a nice, quiet place to be into and not a whole lot of traffic. So, I mean, the one guy that's living where the lot is, I'm pretty sure he's here. I know he is, but I don't think I'd be a happy camper either. But, you know, I mean, Riel was just saying he lives right across the street and there is a concern about, you know, just the whole thing. And I just wanted to say that. I want to thank you guys. And I know it's an issue with the schooling. I mean, I've been here, Grand Prairie's a nice city, and, I mean, it's growing fast, right? And it's, our kids are the number one thing. We have to make sure that the education is is huge. But, I mean, we just got to look at everybody's concerns or two. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you for the presentation. Is there is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this issue? Sure. Come forward.
I'll try to say something.
Welcome.
All right. My name is Sue Longson. I live on the block, of course. My house backs onto the field. And so the year that Derrick Taylor was built, I spent an hour on the phone with nine-one-one as the kids had broken into Derrick Taylor and were smashing the light fixtures against Kateri School and then broke into Kateri School. And so I was on the phone with the nine-one-one, get the police here. These guys, now these guys and the nine-one-one operator would say to me, that sounds like it's right outside your window. And I said, it is right outside my window. But that parking lot becomes another place for kids to hang out that's not on a main street or loop, right? It's another dark place that they can hang out. They hang out behind Kateri School quite often. For a while, the R C M P knew my voice. You know, it's gotten better over the years. I don't know if those kids have moved somewhere else, but it is another place for them to just kind of hang out and do whatever they do when they're hanging out as youth. And the other thing is, if there is an accident on our loop, how do we get out if it's a closed loop, right? If it's a one-in, one-out, and that's it. So I just wanted to kind of mention the safety issue there and the vandalism, right? So.
Thanks very much, Longson. I don't see anybody else in the, anybody in the queue to ask you a question. Thanks. Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else who'd like to present on this issue or any other issue? I see some ladies in yellow shirts that have a feeling that aren't here about parking lots. They're here about public spaces, but not about park, public parking. Okay. And so I see somebody else there in the back that'd like to come forward. Sure, come on up to the, come up to the front.
We're not with the park.
Sure. Well, you're still welcome.
My name's Danielle Hessler, and I'm a a member of the South Peaceball Association Playground Committee.
And I'm Amber Pryor, also part of the committee as well. So actually, the reason we are here today is because we recently found out that the Community Living Committee denied our request that we had brought forward to the Community Living Committee in August of this last year. So that request basically was, I, we provided a proposal that in, had a playground proposal down at the South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds to be placed on Diamond One and Diamond Three. There were two requests that we had. One was to endorse a playground and also provide fifty percent of the funding for that playground, which would equate to about forty-five thousand dollars. And the other was basically just to the support the development of that playground. I understand that there was two issues that the Community Living Committee had raised, one being location. Natural surveillance absolutely is limited in that area between Diamonds One and Diamond Three. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it is limited. However, those diamonds are being used seven days a week from from beginning of May all the way until the beginning of October. What we requested to do, one for safety issues of the diamonds, or because the location of the playground with the diamonds being adjacent to it, would be to fence the playgrounds with, have a netting over top to protect the children from foul balls or any other dangers that might come up. With the natural surveillance issues being there, we also suggested that we could have the playground being, that that fence, sorry, being locked. So it only had access when there was natural surveillance available at the playground. That doesn't have to be. It can remain open. It was just a suggestion to assist with those natural surveillance issues. To my understanding, there was then more safety issues brought up because of the fencing that would be put up around the playgrounds. I've been to other Ball Diamonds in other communities that have playgrounds at their Ball Diamonds. They are all fenced in, covered. There's never been any issues that I have seen with kids climbing them, the fences. We've never seen any issues with kids climbing the fences at the backstops down there or or anything else. Obviously, you can tell by just how I'm talking right now that I am very concerned, even not so much that that the funding was, I guess, denied going forward to you guys, but just the fact that that we would not be able to build a playground down there. We do have have sponsorship towards that playground of twenty-five thousand dollars. And in fact, we had a meeting to go today to talk about more fundraising options that we've canceled, because we will not be discussing about future fundraising if we do not have the support from the city.
Thanks very much, ladies, for the presentation. So there is a motion on our agenda tonight that speaks to this and appreciate the presentation. I don't know if any council members had any questions for the delegation. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thank you for coming. I am the chairman of Community Living, and you can read the notes. I did vote for it. I felt that your proposal was was bang on. There was a little bit of a budgetary, it has to go to budget again. But I've I've been to storm games and those pucks come at eighty, ninety, whatever miles an hour, and they they have, they're covered. And I think that the way it was explained, I know we don't want any accidents, we don't want anybody to get in there, and you had just explained that they were going to be locked and only used when when the parents are there with their children. You didn't want kids climbing up and, you know, hurting their fingers or falling down. But I was sure that the netting and it was a location you wanted. There was a location was going to be, I can't remember, the three or four, whatever, the other diamonds, anyway. And that wasn't the request that you you wanted. And I I felt that the request that you had was in order and the the fencing, I thought, was in order myself. Kids will be kids. I love them. I have grandkids, too. But I was the only one vote, so it is going to budget review and it is on the budget or it is on the council agenda tonight. So you can maybe stick around for a little bit more.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
And just for clarification, Counselor Crokin, the motion that's coming forward is is that it doesn't speak to referring it to budget. So that's an option that council has tonight if they wish to, to refer that item to budget. But the motion that came forward from the committee was, didn't speak to to it going to budget.
Mayor Given, could I also ask, could I ask maybe Director of Community Living, Director Roth, just maybe address the ladies that are here, how it was, how it came about?
I think Counselor Crokin and the ladies are here to make their presentation about their concerns. And when we get to the agenda.
Okay, sure.
With this, then council members could ask questions of administration to explore that. But the ladies are here to present their position and their request to council. So if we look for questions for the delegation. I see Counselor Monroe has a question.
Thanks, Mayor Given. With the construction of this playground, is it your intent that it would be constructed by a certified professional company? Or is this something that would be done by the organization? Are you organizing?
It will all be done, actually, by Blue Imp. And they've provided our plans that meet all of the city's requirements for a park. I I do have that all laid out, and that was all described in that proposal, which I would be happy to share with you guys again. I actually have it right here if anybody's wanting to look at it.
That's all I had for you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you for coming forward. I see on Community Living. And one of the biggest concerns was about the netting. So hopefully when it comes up, you speak to it now, we're very concerned about foul balls. I really do believe in lots of money, more money is going into South Bear Park because I believe there was 500,000 by this council redo fields. There have been different things happening down there, so it's a positive step that's been going down there. And I am for the playground. I have two little girls, so, but we are concerned about the netting and, and how it's gonna be done, so.
I don't see, I don't see anybody else in the queue, ladies. So thanks very much for the presentation. Thanks for coming to speak to this. And as I said, it is on the agenda for later on, so you'll be able to hear that discussion and the outcome of that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. I have to say, this is probably one of the more exciting council meetings that we've had in the entire term. I don't know why you all waited till the very last meeting to show up and, and give us the delegations, but no, this is, this is the delegation portion of the agenda, as I said. And I wanna make sure that everybody feels that they, they've had opportunity to speak. If there's anybody else that wanted to come forward, otherwise I'll look to close the delegation portion of the agenda and we'll move on to actually the business of our agenda. So is there anybody else that felt that they wanted to come forward? Not seeing anybody, anybody moving, so I'm gonna close the delegation portion of our agenda. We'd move on to public hearings. We had none tonight. We had no items of unfinished business. Item 8.1, the strategic priorities chart under reports. Mr. City Manager, would you care to introduce that strategic priorities chart for us? There we go.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Given. The, one of the, earlier this evening, I heard you talking about the council's strategic plan and the business plan council had over the term. One of the ways council has implemented the business plan is by the use of a strategic priority chart. And what that does, every quarter, the council meets, talks about the issues and items they have on their strategic priorities chart and gets updates from staff on, on various items. So I'll be pleased to provide you with the final strategic priorities chart update for this council. So it's for the quarter starting October going through December 2013. There's three top council priorities, one being the annexation. And the, the task there is to confirm when the full, full hearing date is. There was a preliminary hearing held earlier in September and it's now in the court of the municipal government board. And they will be coming back to us with a full hearing date, I'm guessing likely in the new year. The next priority is the subdivision and development fiscal model. This was an item council had talked about earlier in their business planning in terms of how, when subdivisions and developments are put in place of council, what would be the impact on the community, what would be the costs. So there is an update coming forward to council. It's planned to come forward in November on that topic. The third priority was city land planning and there will be in October, a final report coming to council. I guess now will be November because the next council meeting will be beginning of November, so probably that changed the date. The other thing council has on this strategic priorities chart is advocacy priorities. And this is, and Minister Drysdale will be familiar with council and their advocacy plans. Council has four advocacy priorities. And what council did with this particular quarter, they, they've added the Build Canada Fund to the Provincial Funding Inequities item. The second one was the Municipal Government Act Review, which was, you heard earlier this evening. The third one is Highway 43X Construction and Bypass Upgrades. One thing that was added to that one for this particular quarter was the pedestrian overpass and what was happening with that topic. And the last one is Education Programs and Capital Priorities. And the final section of council's plan, it gets into the corporate strategies and that would be the three that I mentioned earlier this evening, the community engagement and consultation, balancing excellence and value and fiscal sustainability. And, and those particular items, there's been new milestones suggested for a number of different action steps in terms of community engagement, the implementation strategy will be coming forth in December, this satisfaction survey. That's been now shared at a public meeting at the library just a couple of weeks ago. And an action plan for that will be coming out in December. In terms of the Leisure Center Project, the Aquatics Facilities Needs Assessment is being undertaken and I guess the Community Living Director will be presenting that in November, I believe. The next item is a seniors lodge location and the next item there is identifying site options and that will be coming back to council in November. And the final one is infill development strategy for the fiscal sustainability strategy. And there'll be options, a discussion paper presented to council in December.
Thanks, Mr. City Manager. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the strategic priorities chart for the, the final one for this term? If there weren't, I would look for a motion as well. I see Counselor Rice.
I just have a question for Greg.
Counselor Rice?
I noticed the advocacy priorities, one of them is the Highway 43 Construction and Bypass, also a pedestrian overpass. Recently, I was in Edmonton and they seem to have a similar situation. So what they've done is, on, on an area where we have kids running across the highway, they've, they've just installed a section of chain link fence in the, in the median, forcing them to go up to the corner. And it seemed to be working very effectively and I, I wonder at what point would, like, if we're not being able to afford a pedestrian overpass, which would be very expensive, like when we could look at something, like an alternative that might be cheaper, but create greater safety?
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you for that, Counselor Rice. Certainly I can pass that on to our engineering department. They're the ones looking at this project in more details. And so, actually, our, our director is here and he's hearing that, so I'm sure he'll pass that on to his staff.
Thank you.
Counselor Redburn?
Ready for a motion, Mayor Given?
Sure, I certainly am. Counsel Redburn, go ahead.
I'd move that council approve the strategic priorities chart for the term October to December 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanna speak to Counselor Rice about a, a pathway. I believe there's one should go there. Sometimes you create obstacles. Children will find a way to go through them. And I believe that could be a partnership with the county and the provincial government because the bypass is owned by provincial government. There's two county schools there. And actually, part of the youth delegate came to us from the county school. So I do believe our city's lacking of a couple of pathways. So I have to say that I hope they do come.
Thanks. Counselor McLean, any further discussion or debate on the motion to approve the strategic priorities chart? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Then we move on to committee business and item 9.1, the Arts Development Committee from September 13th. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Arts Development Committee meeting held September 13th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions, anything that we had to correct before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Monroe, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Certainly, Mayor Given. We had a couple of items for discussion. One of them was our second round of festival funding for the year. We managed to help fund the Grand Prairie Boys Choir. They've got a session coming, or, pardon me. Their Male Voice One and Two, which was to be held back, I guess, September 13th and 14th, so it's already, it's already come and gone. And we've also funded the ACFA 16th Annual Maple Sugar Festival for February through to March 2014. So those are a couple of, of the ones that we did, or pardon me, one, one last one in there that we did was the GP Singers Festival, Festival of Carols. And that's, I guess, a festival that's been going on for many years, great success there as well, too. It's the Singing Christmas Tree, I believe, and that stuff. So it's, it's good to have those organizations funded. And, and then we did a couple of individual scholarship fundings.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. We'd move on to 9.2, the Community Growth Committee from September 17th. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held September 17th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, Mayor Given. We approved an oil field support. Some company wants to put three really big silos and an elevator in by the train tracks on the east side, so it's a $4.5 million injection to, to the city here. So congratulations on, on those people developing that property. We had a change of zoning we discussed and that's all. Mayor Given?
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. We move on to 9.3, the 100th Anniversary Committee. Counselor Rice?
I move, whoops, I'm sorry. I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting of Tuesday, September 17th.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Well, the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, anything to highlight from that committee meeting?
Just the planning for the 100th Anniversary Celebration next year is now getting very, very exciting. It's moving ahead at a rapid pace. Had some trouble in the past trying to get people excited about it because, you know, two years or three years from now seemed like a long time, but now people are, are really embracing the idea and it's, planning is moving along extremely quickly.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, and thanks for your work on that committee. We move to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee from September 17th. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held September 17th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Thanks very much. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, anything to highlight from that committee?
Thank you, Mayor. There's some funding given out. Sarah Curry's, it was $1,000 for athlete development for canoe polo. Kiana Lindsay was $500 for traveling funding for dog handling to attend a junior national Canadian championship in New Brunswick. There was two given to SAC Pilgrim, 750 for travel funding and 1,000 for athlete development for rugby. As well, there was Elizabeth Auger who received $500 for travel funding for Bannam Girls Nationals in Bedford, Nova Scotia. And the other one as well, it was Jared Larson, received athlete development for $760 for soccer. There was also others that applied for funding, but not all the paperwork was done, so it was sent back to get all the paperwork done and follow procedures. So we'll probably hear back in, in the later fall from that. And there was one that was very positive that came forward. There was a couple that came from Taekwondo Club in the city of Grand Prairie. DART Winter Games, as you might recall, about a year ago, gave some funding. It's about starting a first tournament or first thing in the city. And they had their first tournament and they were awarded $4,500. And they came to speak about it and I remember me and Counselor Redburn were there at that tournament and they had over 300 participants. I don't know how many parents, over 100 or so people from the city of Edmonton. And I remember saying that there, you know, this is like for seed money to, to start a flower, but they already are a flower and they're blossoming. So total success in Art to Winter Games, what it's set up for, this speaks volumes. That's everything. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Monroe, did you have a question for Counselor McLean?
Sure, if I could. Thanks, Mayor Given. Counselor McLean, I was just wondering if you could add some extra insight into the dog handling, athlete travel funding. I wouldn't have normally have thought of something like that as being funded.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you very much, Counselor Monroe. You're correct. It was a, a close decision. It was three and two. It was talked about quite well at the committee, but it was approved by the majority to say yes, go ahead and they were awarded, I believe, was it $500? So in this event, they also had to bring the animal to the area and as well, the parent went, so the majority said yes, it was okay.
Counselor Monroe?
So, and maybe you don't, I'm not sure if you'll know the answer, but like, I mean, what kind of handling is this? Is this, like, where they jump through hoops and stuff or?
I'm gonna be quite honest with you, I'm not quite sure. We could pass along and find out for you down the road, but I, I do believe it was a 3-2 decision and it barely passed on the committee and we wished her well for going through the event.
Thanks, Counselor McLean.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Thanks, Counselor McLean. We'll move on to the Community Living Committee from September 17th as well. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move, council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held September 17th, 2013.
Thank you very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And while I'm calling for the vote, the people that are here, often we have more coming out of our agenda items, but as council's winding down its business, there's less things coming forward from the committees, so. I'm waiting for a couple more votes. And one more. Thank you. That motion carries, so that's why we're receiving so many sets of minutes, is because the committees are still working, but there's fewer things, just given the nature of where we are in the term. Except for Counselor Crokin's committee, he's still got stuff.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, they've just been keeping me busy here, which is really good. I'd also make the motion that the council authorize the city to participate in the Pilot Youth Young Adult Engagement Audit Project being proposed by Apathy is Boring. Just to speak to that briefly, Dale Dinebun made the presentation and it was very exciting to see that what they're trying to do is engage youth and the, the ages, it might just leave me a bit here, but 13, 14, 15, to get involved in politics, to, to ask questions. It's, it's a funding from the FCSS, it's specific project funding. So it's, it's exciting, as all of you in the audience could tell, that our voting has been dropping for municipal, provincial, federal elections. So an initiative like this, we, we really commend Dale for, for putting this on, so I urge you to support it.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Discussion and debate on the motion. I see Counselor Rice.
I didn't, I didn't see any reference to cost.
Mayor, Mayor Given, it's $25,000 that is fully funded through FCSS.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it's a very good initiative to Counselor Crokin for Dale bringing it up. It speaks to, I believe, between 18 and 25-year-olds and as they say, if they go out and vote for the first time, they'll continue on voting. But if they miss a few votings, they might go for 20 years and not vote. But I was also hoping down the road, maybe in the next council, they'll look at maybe more influence on the schools, the younger children, maybe help a little bit more and direct them in a different direction as well to voting. And I know grade six is starting, but I think it's a good initiative, but I'm hoping for more for, in the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion?
Yeah, just to, to add to that, I think that Grand Prairie was on the cutting, cutting board, I guess, but it did get cut to have internet voting. And our youth today, using the social media, I think would have got more involved or will get more involved, but it was cut by the province, so. Thanks, Counselor McLean.
Counselor Crokin, I see Counselor Rice. Thank you.
Okay, it's funded by FCSS, so is that 80, 20 dollars?
Yes, I believe so. 80, 20, that'd be 80 for the province and 20 for Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much for that clarification, Counselor Crokin. Any further discussion? Motion? If not, I'll be looking for the vote. Hey, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the following selection of off-leash dog areas listed in order of priority and to bring forward the capital cost to construct these facilities to the 2014 capital budget review. First, Area Five, South Bear Creek Off-Leash Recreational Trails, and the costs are $22,000 for that one. Area number two, or it's the, the second one, which is Area Two, Crystal Ridge, Northeast Neighborhood Off-Leash Area, it's a $10,000 budget item. The third one is Area Four, Royal Oaks Neighborhood Off-Leash Area, it's $30,500. The fourth one is Area Three, Crystal Ridge West Neighborhood Off-Leash Area, it's at $15,500. And then number five is just a contingency of $12,000 for a total of $90,000. Just to speak briefly to that, Mayor Given, there was approximately 20 or 25 sites that were designated as possibilities. Now, administration went through and highlighted that these four areas, as they're not 1, 2, 3, 4, but they're Area Five, 2, 4, and 3, with this budget attached to go to the 2014 capital budget review for approval. There still is, I understand from Mr. Juniper, consultation of the neighborhoods where these were proposed, so it's not... from Mr. Juniper, consultation of the neighborhoods where these were proposed. So it's not, of course, it's going to do the capital, 2014 capital budget review.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. So clarification that this is just recommending these, the sites that would go forward to that budget review, that this isn't actually funding them at this time. It would be up to the next council to choose in context the overall budget whether these are funded or not.
That's right, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. So I see a few folks in the queue. I see Counselor Rice.
I was just somewhat confused. In Mr. Juniper's report, he says that the proposed locations, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, will meet, so the 6 is a total, and 5 isn't an area. Like, so we're voting on Area 5, 2, 4, 3?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so regardless of what his report says. Okay?
There was, and just for clarity, there was one site that was recommended that the committee felt chose not to recommend forward to council. So that's why the numbering is different.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Radburn?
Mayor Given, I would respectfully ask that this motion be split so we can vote on each part of the motion.
So Counselor Radburn has asked for five, there's five different parts, that we could vote on each of the five different parts separately. And so that motion is in order, we can ask for that at any time. And so we'll start with part number one, Area Number 5, the South Bear Creek Off-Leash Recreational Trails. I'd look for discussion and debate on that item. Counselor Rice in the queue for that one?
Yep.
Counselor Rice?
Oh, okay. I'm urging that you not support this one. Any of the others, I have no problem with. Musca C P Park, that area, in Musca C P Park is used extensively. It's, it's a family area. School classes are held there. I don't think it's, it's appropriate for an off-leash area. Think the other, certainly the other three areas fit, and I support those. And, but I'm urging you not to support this particular location as one of them.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have had a number of phone calls and emails in the last couple of weeks regarding the, the off-leash dog parks. And the one of a major bone of contention is the South Bear Creek Off-Leash Recreational Trail system. There's a fee of approximately $22,000, and I was wondering if somebody could give me some kind of an idea what that money would be spent for.
I wonder if maybe we'd direct that to the Community Living Director. Mr. Roth, can you speak to the expenses associated with the Area Number 5? As you quickly try to call up the report. Mr. Roth?
Your worship, certainly the, most of the expenses would be incurred for signage, waste receptacles, and dog bag dispensers, having them all spread out throughout that, out that area.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Counsel O'Toole, you got the answer to your question?
Yes. I'm in full support of Area 2, Area 4, and Area 3. I'm still, haven't been convinced on Area 5.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm also concerned about Area 5, and the reason I'm concerned is I know how well utilized that area is. It's our connection from our trails to the county's trails, and I know there are people who mountain bike through that area, people that run and bike, bike their way along that service road that goes past our water treatment plant and the landfill. My concern is that this area is currently being proposed without any type of fencing to avoid those kind of conflicts. Also, because it is so close to a road, you know, having some kind of fencing would also be a safety barrier for the, for the animals that are in the, that are using that area. So I would urge council not to approve this location as it is right now. Perhaps administration could come back at a later time with a new design that, that might work. I believe this is the field, which is directly southeast of the water treatment plant. And I know that I use it a lot, and I know that several friends of mine use that a lot, and we pass by that area all the time. So we are concerned that it does create a barrier to travel through, whether you're going to the county's trails or whether you're continuing on east into another green park area.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. I have a feeling everybody's going to have a shot at this. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also was speaking in opposition to this area, and most of it's been covered. I just, I'm really not comfortable with respect to the safety. I think with everybody's good intentions, I think that problems could exist, and I don't want any reason for somebody not to want to cycle or walk any of our trails in our Musca C P Park and resulting trails. And I think they've done, I think administration, based upon input, did a great job in terms of doing the consultation. I know it will be signed, and they found a location that's quite a ways out. But for me, I look at the park as a whole, and I really am not supportive of an unfenced off-leash park in Musca C P Park. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This one was, I had quite a bit thinking about this one, but I came to the conclusion, I believe, it would be a good thing for the city. And a couple of reasons why I believe it would be is, well, I was mostly a cat person since recently, but coyote family seemed to get down my cats, and we just became owners of a young dog. But besides that, I remember back in 2010, my first term council, we were in the beautiful city of Halifax, Nova Scotia, for the FCM, Federation Canadian Municipalities. And you have one of the oldest cities in Canada on the very point have an off-leash dog area. Yes, I'm concerned about picking up the after mess of the, of the animals because I believe a park, if it's, once it starts, it should be shut down until it's cleaned by volunteers. I believe insurance for dog owners that might bite somebody, and they don't have insurance to cover their glasses or physical harm. But I also do believe we are, should be an open city. And the reason why I'm in favor of this is because I've walked some of this area, and this is on the east side of South Bear. If you go east and west, in the west, the area is already being used. So, and people have their dogs off the leash as well already. So if you pick the one area, you can say the other area, you know they're not allowed, or there's going to be a fine. And so I will be voting in favor.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think I share the same concerns that Counselor Wong, O'Toole, and Radburn have already listed. I won't, oh, and Counselor Rice, sorry. I don't think there's a need for me to repeat them at this time, Mayor Given, but safety was, was a huge concern, and I would just, the fencing part of me was the safety concern of mine. However, I'd like to see administration go back and see if we could identify some other locations where we can enhance our dog park areas.
Thanks very much, Counsel Monroe. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm definitely in favor of having some places for, for dog, dog owners to do some recreating with their, with their pets and stuff. But did I hear you correctly saying we're spending $90,000 on signs and garbage cans? And then why do we need a $12,000 contingency to go with that?
So the total budget is $90,000 for all the different sites. Some sites include fencing, which is the ones that are more significant cost. This is a really quite a large area. I don't know if, and so that's why the cost is more expensive here. If administration wants to, they can give a highlight of maybe the cost of the different, associated with the different areas. Mr. Roth?
Excuse me for one minute here. Thank you. Thank you, your worship. My apologies, my report didn't line up with the council motion here. Essentially, each area has a breakdown budget for each area. Some sites do include fencing, and primarily the considerations in each of the locations is fencing, signage, waste receptacles, garbage cans, and dog bag dispensers. Depending on the size of the locations, for example, the South Bear Creek proposed location, Area Number 5, because of the size of it, there's certainly a significant amount of, of much more receptacles and signage needed. Plus, it also includes installation and take into consideration staff accessing those areas. I can run through each one of the locations if you wish. Area 2, the Crystal Ridge location, it has $3,500 in fencing, $750 in signage, $5,000 in waste receptacles, and dog bag dispensers is only $750. Area Number 4...
That's okay, Gary. I didn't, I didn't hear you say fencing in the first time, so as long as there's fencing in there, that's, that's more realistic. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. Yeah, and just to highlight, there was, the other areas are the ones that had fencing. So, okay, I see Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Depending on how the, how the vote goes, that South Bear Creek Off-Leash Recreational Trail, and I should know this, but will they still be able to go there with their dogs on leash?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, certainly it's only a portion of the trails at South Bear Creek that are being considered as an off-leash area. It's only in the far southeast corner of the city that is being considered. The remainder of the trails would still be required to have an animal or dog on leash.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Counselor Crokin. Looks like everybody else had a go, so I'll just say that I will be supporting the recommendation. I think significant areas of the, are already being used as informal off-leash areas. I believe it would be an improvement to have a dedicated area, and I believe that the dog owners that would take the time to go to this off-leash area would most likely be the most responsible dog owners. And so I certainly appreciate that. So I will be supporting the recommendation as it was put forward. I think that this is something that would be a good addition to the community and ultimately would prove out to be very successful. So I will be supporting the motion. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Now, we're just talking about Area 5, the South Bear Creek Off-Leash Recreational Trails. Counsel O'Toole?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Given. I was just at that meeting, and I was just concerned, there is a possibility of enhancing the existing dog leash park right now. I was wondering if maybe we could look at doing that a little earlier than expected.
Sorry, Counsel O'Toole, so we're...
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying that I'm still not in favor of this, and I would like to see the money go towards the enhancement of the new one.
Well, at this point, all we're doing is recommending forward to budget. So we're deciding whether or not anything goes to budget for consideration. If it doesn't pass here, it won't show up at budget. That budget is where it would be funded. So, you know, we can make a follow-up motion, I suppose, if there's other items that council members wanted to refer to budget. But at this point, the motion was that this specific item go forward or not. And that's what we're debating. So, any further discussion on that, on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Looking for one more. Thank you very much. And that motion fails with six opposed. And we move on to Area Number 2, Crystal Ridge, Northeast Neighborhood Off-Leash Area. So that motion is on the floor by Counselor Crokin, since they were all one and then split. So I'll call for a discussion and debate on Area Number 2, Crystal Ridge. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counsel Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I will speak in favor of this one in the next three. Well, I'll speak in favor of this one for the next three. I believe that we do need a lot more off-leash dog areas in this city. People who, who own pets, they realize that their dogs need to run. And I like where this now ends up in priority. We do need some more dog parks up in the north side of town. We do, we've had one in the south for a while, and people have been driving quite a distance just to get their dogs to run or allow their dogs to run free. And having more spread out throughout the city just makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we move on to Area Number 4, the Royal Oaks Neighborhood Off-Leash Area. Any discussion or debate on this item? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm for all the rest of them coming up, and as well, this one is right behind Cal Tire. It's a drainage area, and it's not being utilized right now for anything. We got a few of them like that in the city. And there ain't very many homes. There'll be eight or nine, 10 houses around there and an apartment building. And I believe there's a fence there at the apartment building that could be corrected, if I'm wrong there. So I think this one's a really good area for the city.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. Any further discussion or debate on Area Number 4, Royal Oaks? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, and we move on to Number 4, Area Number 3, Crystal Ridge West. Any discussion or debate on this recommended, recommended area? Seeing nobody in the queue, seeming like everybody had their, spoke their piece on all of them, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then finally, we had the contingency that we split, just because it was one of the five items. So we'll call for the vote on the contingency. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. So all of those items are now referred, sorry, all of the items that passed, Area Number 2, Crystal Ridge, Area Number 4, Royal Oaks, Area Number 3, Crystal Ridge, Crystal Ridge West, and the contingency will be forwarded onto the budget where the next council will ultimately decide on those. Counsel O'Toole, did you have a follow-up on this?
Mayor Given, I'd like to have the budget review incorporate the $22,000 that was originally delegated to the South Peace, South Bear Creek Off-Leash Recreational Trail be forwarded to a possible enhancement of the existing off-leash dog park.
Okay, so that motion is the, to recommend forward to budget, up to $22,000 for enhancements to the existing dog leash park.
Yes, that's correct.
Excuse me, off-leash dog park. Thank you. Okay, so that motion is in order. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Certainly willing to consider. Gary, or administration, any ideas as to how that money could be spent and invested wisely?
Mr. Roth?
At the committee meeting, staff had suggested that it is possible to perhaps extend the, make the off-leash area bigger at the South Bear Creek existing ballpark, including potentially having some, using some space on the slope to the west side of the trail and fencing off an area on the other side of the trail. It has to be further developed, but that was some suggestions that staff had given when it was discussed at Community Living Committee.
Okay, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so that is forwarded to budget as well. And Counselor Crokin, I believe you had one last item of business from this committee meeting.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm going to have Counsel Rice, who will be making this motion. I'll be speaking against it.
Counsel Rice?
I would move that council deny the request for funding assistance for installation of a playground at South Bear Creek and deny the request for the installation of a playground structure at South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Rice.
Is there anybody that would like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mayor Given.
Counselor Crokin?
Well, thank you very much. I, I would like to speak to that. We do have another jewel, and that is our, our South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds. There's been an awful lot of work done down there with the, with the grandstands and the batting cages, the concessions. I've been down there a number of times, and I feel that maybe there wasn't enough information given at the time. I, I believe 110% that our children... I, I believe one hundred and ten percent that our children must be protected against not only foul balls, but maybe bats that break and go flying or whatever. It's, it's, it's pretty dangerous if a ball does get at any, well, at adults too, but usually you can catch them. Kids will be talking and not paying attention most of the time if they're having a good time. So I would urge council to deny, to vote against this, and I will be making another motion to bring it back to administration to work with the South Bear Creek Ball Association on these diamonds, on the location and the type of material that has been approved by the builder, and I can't remember what the builder's name was that builds these, yep, and it's, it's safety is the utmost, so please vote with me to deny this, and then we will have my new motion. Am I denying it, or am I requesting it?
Well, just to be, most often, our motions are made in the positive.
Yeah.
So this is a little bit of a backwards one, so if you vote for the motion, you're voting against the proposal. So Counselor Kropen and I think you'll be voting against the motion, which means you're voting for the proposal.
That's right. That's what I was getting to. That's right.
So we're clear. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to vote with Counselor Kropen with the double negative, and my feeling is that Grand Prairie has a very young population, which means that it has a lot of young kids as well, and both those generations like to play, and there's no reason why they shouldn't be allowed to play in the same area together. It's quite obvious that we can't possibly be the first community to have playground structures near Ball Diamonds. Other people, other communities probably have proven that it can be made safe. I think that we should allow the South Peace Ball Association at least the courtesy of investigating that and, and allowing the installation of that playground structure.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. I see Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank the group representing South Bear Creek about the net over top. I do know the playground worked very well. The town of Grand Cash has got a playground that was all by donations up by the, their area that works very well, but it's a little bit set back, so we were wondering on the committee the location, and the netting has sold me in the fence around as well. So just going to ask the mayor one more question, so I want this, I want it to go through, so I'm going to vote no on this so that we can, okay, thank you.
Counselor Radvern?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll also be voting no to this. I believe that this is a, this project has merit and should be among the others that are brought forward to our budget deliberations. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radvern. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll say at the committee, I voted against this motion, and so I'll be voting against it here as well. I certainly support moving this forward to the budget. I think if there's a need to review the location or the implementation, there's an opportunity to do that with South Peace Ball, and that's why I certainly support it moving forward to budget. Ultimately, it'll have to contend with all the other budget requests at the same time, but moving it forward does give an opportunity for administration to work with the proponents to see if there's ways to address the concerns that were raised. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to vote.
Careful.
With Helen Rice. And the reason being, I don't think the location of the playground that we have at this particular time is the right location, and we have a number of people in administration that this sort of situation, playground, goes through. We've got crime prevention, we've got engineering, and I just feel that I'm going to stick with their recommendation, and if they want to come back and change the location, I would probably be very much in favor.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think, because everyone else has spoken about it, might as well throw in. Originally, at committee, I did not support this coming forward to this council meeting. However, I think that, given the information that we have now, it sounds like perhaps this group is hearing loud and clear some of our concerns, Counselor O'Toole, and that it sounds like there may be a possibility for relocating it somewhere within the Ball Diamonds, and so I think this gives them the opportunity to have another look at it and bring it back to budget, and all we're doing is allowing them the opportunity to bring it forward to budget. So I guess, once again, voted against it at committee, but at this point, I will be supporting Counsel Kropen's motion to allow this to go through. Thank you. By voting no.
End of the term. Three years, three years. Counselor Kropen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess in, in closing, I want to thank council for, for this very positive no vote.
Okay, so I think we've all had an opportunity on this one, so I'll call for the vote. Just to clarify, the motion was in the negative, so if you're voting against the motion, that means that, that it would be referred on to budget. Sorry, thank you, if Counselor Kropen, if Counselor Kropen follows up with a subsequent motion to refer it on to budget. So we're going to have this one, if it, if this motion fails, then there would need to be another motion to refer it on to budget. Okay, just so we're all clear. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. And that motion is all read, so the motion fails. Counselor Kropen, would you care to make a follow-up motion?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As a wordage, I'll let Audrey do that, but what I would like to do...
Just do the exact opposite of what the last motion did.
Request funding assistance for...
Rather than deny.
Okay. Request funding assistance for installation of playground and installation of playground structure at South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds to be determined.
Maybe to be referred to the 2014 budget. Granted, there's some additional...
We don't have any money. Well, we had twenty thousand left from, no, to the 2014 budget review, yes, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counsel Kropen. Sorry for being a little bit lighthearted there. So it is a motion to refer this on to budget where it'll be considered in context with all the other budget decisions that the new council faces. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Do we all know what we're voting for? Thanks very much. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Kropen, there couldn't possibly be any other business from your committee meeting.
Mayor Given, I looked, we have covered absolutely everything. You, you put everything on my committee there, and we did a good job. Thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Kropen. So we've moved to nine point six Combative Sports Commission minutes from September eighteenth. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like council to receive the minutes of the Combative Sports Commission meeting held September eighteenth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries.
Just a couple comments. We did have a commission, the commission reviewed circumstances pertaining to a decision to reinstate the promoter and event licenses for a promoter named Five Star Athletics. They failed to make a payment on time, and doing our, through our bylaws, we revoked the license and the promoter's event license as well. We reviewed that in a meeting, and we reinstated the promoter. A payment has been made. One of the issues that we're dealing with right now is federal laws pertaining to amateur events, and the province and the federal government are at wits' end on how to, to deal with this situation where previously amateurs and professionals could fight on the same card. At this present time, the city has taken a stance that we will not allow any amateur events until we get the approval of the province, and that's where we're at right now. And just a couple other updates, as soon as the, the vote was taken, I did phone the promoter right away, let him know that the arrangements and the decision was turned, and he was very thankful and apologized. There was a number of housekeeping duties that he wasn't following up on, and he agreed that it was completely his fault and nothing to do with the city. So there's my report, sir.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So we move to the Community Safety Committee from September twenty-fourth. Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Meeting held September twenty-fourth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Is everything in order? We'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I move that council approve the award of option year three for supply of road salt, tender T forty-one five forty-six dash eleven to N S C Minerals Inc. in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-and-seventy dollars excluding GST. Speaking of this, Mayor Given, this was a, a three-year contract with, with escalations built into the contract. The third year was an option. Administration tells us that this three-year optional amount is still lower than what a new tender would come out at, so this is budgeted, and it's probably a good choice.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. I see Counsel Rice in the queue for question or comment.
Is N S C a new company? I, it seems to me we always before did Windsor, Windsor or Sifto, and I've not heard of this company before.
We've been using this company for the last two years.
Have we? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see nobody else in the queue, so I'll call for the vote on this motion. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I would like to ask another counselor to make this series of motions if possible. I'd like to offer amendment at, at the appropriate time.
Okay, so Counselor Wong is looking to make an amendment, so if another councilor would care to step up. We have a bylaw, bylaw C twelve twenty-six, the Animal and Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw. To pass this, we need to do three readings. The first reading, there's no discussion and debate, so if we can get a motion for a first reading, Counsel O'Toole?
Yes, bylaw C twelve six, twelve twenty-six, Animal and Responsible Pet Ownership. I'd like to make a recommendation that first reading be given to bylaw C twelve twenty-six, Animal and Responsible Pet Ownership.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So as I said, there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. One to ring in yet. Thank you. That motion carries, so we could move on to second reading. Counselor O'Toole?
The second reading be given, I recommend that second reading be given to bylaw C dash twelve twenty-six, Animal and Responsible, Responsible Pet Ownership.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So an opportunity now on second reading for discussion and debate. I see Counsel Rice in the queue first.
I guess I, I'm concerned that we maybe haven't done enough in terms of education. This is a huge change. This removes the, the one noted breeds or something, you know how, and I, and I recognize the rationale for that, but it does remove that. It addresses Counselor O'Toole, snakes, but it's a huge change, and I, you know, I haven't received any input on it, and I wonder if that's because maybe people don't realize the implications, and I guess I just need some, some reassurance that council is convinced that we have indeed, you know, done enough education so the public understands this big change. It would mean that if you have a pit bull now, you don't have to keep it penned up, you don't have to have it fenced, you don't have to have insurance, that type of thing.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Counsel Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. This bylaw has gone through some extensive consultation. What Counsel Rice is referring to is the removal of restricted breed designation, so the pit bull was the only one that we had on that list, and now there's a new section for vicious animals. So if an animal exhibits signs of being vicious, they, they would require those same requirements as the, what used to be there for restricted breeds. The, the real hard part about the restricted breed was, other than a genealogical test, it would, it was, or genetics test, it was impossible to determine whether a dog was a pit bull or not. A dog that may look like a pit bull could, could be a number of any dozens of breeds of dogs, so the administration always had trouble with that. Anyway, that, that isn't the, the part of the bylaw that I had any trouble with. I think that there has been enough consultation on that, and the reason we haven't heard anything was probably because people understood, it's, it's really common sense that if, you know, if you do have an animal that should be restricted, it should be because of its behavior regardless of its breed. The only section that I'd like to speak on, and I'd like to propose an amendment, that Schedule B include a section for dogs off-leash other than in an off-leash area, that, that is already included in the bylaw, that it's, it's illegal to do that within the city. However, within Schedule B of, in the fines, it is explicitly stated, and that, that's troublesome to me because it, it's, it's an area that administration gets a lot of calls on, yet it's not a specific item in there. I think that it gives people who are flipping through there a false impression that maybe they are allowed to do that. The, the off-leash fine was in the old bylaw. It was in bylaw C nine eight nine. There's no reason why it should, shouldn't carry forward into this new bylaw, which is supposed to make things more clear, and instead, I think it makes it less clear.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. So we'll accept that motion to amend Schedule B to include a specific provision around dogs off-leash in an area other than an off-leash dog area. That's correct? That's how you did it?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so that motion of amendment is in order, so I'd look for discussion and debate on the amendment that's proposed by Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on the amendment that's proposed by Counsel Wong? I have a few counselors in the queue, so if you're in the queue, we'll have you speak to that. I see one administration coming in, and so I wonder, I have a feeling that may be from our bylaw manager. Chris, would you like to speak to that? You may be able to add some?
Absolutely. I just want to suggest some alternative wording, just to be consistent with what exists in the bylaw right now that Counselor Wong was referring to.
If any other council members have their microphone on, could you please turn it off? And then, Chris, put your microphone on, just that way it makes it on to the web than the recording.
Okay, yeah, it's back on. So I'm just suggesting that if we go with the alternative wording, that we go with, I'm suggesting we go with section three point six, animal run at large, along with the hundred dollar fine.
Suggestion from administration, just in terms of wording, Counsel Wong, we'll see if that meets the intent, adding section three point six, under section three point six, dog at large, sorry, running at large, and a hundred dollar specified fine. Counsel Wong?
Still not sure if everyone understands that a dog running at large isn't a dog that is just walking next to their owner without a leash.
So Counsel Wong, it's up to you. Administration's making recommendations, so if you'd...
I choose not to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, so Counsel Wong's going to stick with his original wording to amend Schedule B to include a specified fine for dog off-leash in an area other than an off-leash dog area. Okay? Okay? I see Counsel Monroe in the queue.
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I mean, as far as I can tell, this is, can still be three point six as far as I can say, and just have Counsel Wong's wording in there and the hundred dollar fine, I really see no issue with this and would be in support of the motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Monroe. Any further discussion or debate on Counsel Wong's motion to amend? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed, so we'll move on to second reading as amended. So Counsel O'Toole had made a motion for second reading. Counsel Wong amended second reading to change the bylaw, and now we're voting on Counsel O'Toole's motion that now includes the amendment. Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to speak that I might want to add another amendment on this. I believe it's very well good not... I believe it's very well good not to leave your animal unattended. I mean, really, you shouldn't be leaving your animal unattended or going to a store or anywhere. I believe there's lots of good stuff in this, as well as not leaving an animal like a dog in the back of a truck without being constrained in the way so it doesn't fall out, get dragged. But there's one I have contentious on it is having four animals in one home. Besides the dog having puppies, I find that a little bit high. So I'm asking administration, Chris, what other areas? Because I believe four seems to be, and some of our lots are called small lots now, they're 30 feet wide, and to have four dogs in one house, like, are we kidding? Can you please speak to that, Chris?
Certainly I can. So our existing bylaw presently allows for up to five. So it's actually a reduction from what exists today. When we talk about four, that's, so that would be inclusive of cats and dogs. It's not, it wouldn't be like four dogs and four cats. It's really kind of striking a balance. One of the things that we struggle with right now is the way the bylaw reads is, it says five per resident. So if you have a basement suite, for instance, does that now mean that you can have 10 animals at a property, right? So I think we've closed some of those gaps that existed before. But we figured four does strike a balance and is consistent with what most other municipalities that we researched were doing. So we consider that kind of the balance.
Thanks very much, Mr. Sir.
Just want to finish up there, Mayor Given. To Chris, so you could have potentially, it could be worded that you're only allowed to have two dogs per resident, I mean, within a phase-in period. And then you can have, you're saying up to four, you can have two dogs, two cats, or whatever else, a spider, whatever, to consider a pet, maybe snakes or two. But I'm going to make, try to make a friendly amendment. I'm hoping that a phase-in period or whatever of, no matter upper or down residence, two dogs per residence. And you can have up to four if you want, two cats. I believe four dogs in one house is absolutely too many.
So, Councilor McLean, I'm going to need to be a little bit more specific about the motion.
Yes, I don't have the number. Chris, what area is that in? I didn't highlight it.
Councilor Rice recommending, suggesting 2.18?
Hmm.
So, Councilor McLean, what is your wording? How do you want to change?
It's current analog tag. Is that 2.8, Chris?
2.18.
1.8, yeah, I was going to say it's not 1, 2.8. Yeah, I'm off on here. 2.1. Three months earlier. I believe it should be worded that, worded in a way that a household should not have more than two dogs per household, up to a limit of four animals. So then you can add the cats or whatever you want to add. Four dogs seems a little bit high.
Okay, so, Councilor McLean, you're making motion to amend section 2.18 to specify maximum of two dogs per household, or total of up to two, sorry, four animals. Okay? Okay, so I'll rule that motion in order. Look for discussion and debate on the amendment. Anybody that wish to speak to the amendment? Councilor Rice, I see you in the queue still. Are you to speak to the amendment? Okay.
I'm not sure that Councilor McLean's amendment addresses Mr. Manuel's concern that older, in the same residence within the city. So that would mean if you have a basement suite, you could have double the number. Like, I'm thinking that wording should be amended, or you're not going to accomplish what you want to. The potential arises for you not to accomplish what you want to accomplish. But I don't know how you would say the same municipal address, or, I'm not sure how you would word that.
I'll speak to Councilor Rice if they.
Please, Councilor McLean, ring into the queue if you.
Oh, I thought I did. Sorry about that, Mayor Given.
Councilor McLean.
To Councilor Rice, asking about the wording. I think the wording is good because now you can have eight dogs. You have an upper and lower suite. So this would change it to minimum of four, and most homes don't have upper and lower suites in neighborhoods. So it would be limited to possibly just two. And then, but right now, you could maybe go eight by the wording, if you don't make the change.
Okay, thanks, Councilor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion to amend? Councilor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I know it seems like council's being anti-dog here today, but I'm sure everyone that's not the case. I think that administration has done its job and done its research in terms of what's reasonable in a community, and reducing from five to four is already a step that addresses Councilor McLean's concerns. And I believe that four is a reasonable number based on the comparable cities that they looked at.
Thanks, Councilor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion to amend? I see nobody else in the queue, then I'll call for the vote on Councilor McLean's amendment. Thank you. That motion does not carry, so we'll stay with Councilor O'Toole's motion for second reading, as he made, and as was amended by Councilor Wong. I look for any further discussion or debate on second reading as amended. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can move on to a motion to have third reading. In order to have all three readings of bylaw in one evening, we have to have a motion approving that. That motion must pass unanimously for third reading to go forward here tonight. Otherwise, the bylaw would go forward to a future council meeting, which in this case would be after the election. So, Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I recommend that council have the third reading of bylaw C-1226, the Animal and Responsible Pet Ownership.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. So a motion to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight. As amended, thank you. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, so the bylaw will not get passed this term, and we'll come back for the new council after the election. We move on to item, sorry, Councilor Wong, this was your committee. If you have any additional items that you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Sure, I'll let council and the public know that we had a delegation from Safe Communities. They were requesting the secondment of a staff member to help organize and implement and oversee Safety City school programming. And they were looking for a one-time grant of $30,000 to help cover the costs of HVAC system repairs and replacements to their building, as well as e-stroff. Committee directed administration to get some more information for us and report back to a future meeting. There was also, let's see here, a letter from residents of the Southwood Park Place condominium who submitted a letter requesting that the repaving of 79th Avenue. The committee decided to just receive their, receive the report for information. Administration has basically told us that the 2014 program, the paving has already been decided, and that 79th Ave. could be considered in the 2015 program. And that's something that they would probably be looking at internally. And finally, there was one last item that was referred from council. There was 92nd Street along 100th Avenue. We had a delegation come at the last council meeting asking about safety concerns and for improved signage or some kind of indication to people driving along that street that the areas in front of their house were allowed to be parked in during certain times of the day. So committee directed administration to review the options for improved signage. Any geometric upgrades to that section will be, will be open for discussion at a future committee meeting when that road eventually does get designed for 20. And that's everything.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. So we'd move on to the 9.8 Corporate Services Committee meeting from September 24th. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
I would move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held September 24th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Radburn, can we make the next motion?
Thank you. I would move council authorize the County of Grand Prairie, number one, to participate in an application for interior finishes and displays for the Philip J. Currie Dennis Museum submitted by the County of Grand Prairie, number one, under the regional collaboration component of the regional collaboration program. And further, the city, a participant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds. Yeah, it's a, it's a complex motion, but I think basically it's a, we're supporting the application for regional collaboration grant for finishes and interior finishes and displays for Philip J. Currie Dennis Museum.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Discussion and debate, Councilor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Is this going to cost us any more money?
Councilor Radburn?
Yeah, great question. No. The money, we either get it from the government, provincial government, or not. We're not putting any money into it as a city.
Thank you.
No more.
No more.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'd just note that this is as a result of a discussion that we held at an inter-ministerial meeting with all the municipalities in the region, and we discussed opportunities to best leverage these regional collaboration grants to ensure that our region of the province was seeing money. It was recognized that this is the most developed grant application, this one and the one that follow are the most developed grant applications, and so receive full support of all the municipalities in the region, including the city. I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council authorize Town of Wembley to participate in an application for the West Regional Waterline Project submitted by the Town of Wembley under the regional collaboration component of the regional collaboration program. And further, the city, a participant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds. Similar type, except this is an application to do a feasibility study to follow up the South Peace Regional Water Feasibility Study. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And, Councilor Radburn, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just three other items to provide an overview for. We did review a review of our investment portfolio, and our service provider was there to answer questions along with our staff. We also looked at a report on our program, department, Business Enhancement Review Program and process, and we chose and directed administration to move the Crystal Centre Engineering Services and Inspection Services up in the list to be the next departments that would have the review. And finally, we did support a motion to send forward to budget a request from Community Futures for $10,000 for each of three years to support the Northern Alberta Youth Entrepreneur Camp. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. I believe that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. Sorry, thank you very much, Mr. McLean. We had 9.9, our added item. We just, this agenda is so exciting, we had to add something else to it.
It did.
So the item from our council committee, the whole, Councilor Radburn, the Hillside Social Housing Properties.
Thank you. I would move council approve the city-owned duplexes on 108th Avenue be demolished and that utilities for the duplexes be terminated pending funding approval during the 2014 capital budget deliberations. We've had, yeah, this was happened in committee, committee of the whole meeting previous, so I think that the explanation is, we've had discussion.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Essentially, it, council's authorizing the demolition subject to the budget being approved in the fall.
Correct.
Or at the budget review. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Now we're finished all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, and next up is delegation business. For all those of you who stuck it out, thank you very much. The first present, well, the first presentation was from the Honorable Wayne Drysdale. If we could have a motion to receive his update and question and answer for information, Councilor Rice.
Receive the Honorable Wayne Drysdale's report for information.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. The second delegation was the presentation to Mr. Lacusta. I don't know if we need a motion to receive that for information since we're making the presentation. The next delegation's related to the Derek Taylor parking lot issue. There was a request made, two parts. The first was that the school be allowed to use the portables in advance of the parking, which we heard Mr. Lerner's is happening. The second part was that the city grant some flexibility with regards to the development permit and the establishment of those stalls. So council has an opportunity to give direction to administration here. Councilor Rice.
I would move we give direction to administration to allow use of the portables immediately, and that we advise our administration to work closely with them to come up with a solution, show flexibility in dealing with this.
I think what I heard from the first delegation, the request was to, maybe a better way to say, direct administration, provide some flexibility to work with the Grand Prairie Public School Board in terms of location of.
Okay.
Need for additional parking stalls on site.
Yeah, okay. You got that, Audrey?
So, so that basically gives, would give our city administration the go-ahead to say, work with the school board and to find a solution that would be acceptable to the neighborhood. Expectation, of course, would be that the school board as the developer would be engaging the neighbors and the residents in that decision. And, but this essentially says that the city is not requiring the school board to abide by that development permit. We're looking for alternate solutions. So that motion is in order, open for discussion and debate. Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've heard quite a few discussions as well on the both speed limits, and when I sat on community safety for the first year, there was a motion I brought forward, and this council directed to go to AUMAs. I don't know if this is directed to Councilor Rice or to Director Hershio about speed fines doubling in school zones, just like in construction sites. I'd like to know where that's at, and maybe we can't get that information tonight, but it was brought, spoke of on behalf of our mayor, given at one of the AUMAs in Edmonton, and now it's out there wherever. But it was concerned about speed limits, and maybe they're in a special area. So I know working towards administration, I hope they're looking at speed limits in certain areas if the community brings it forward to the next council. And as well, I'm very interested on the double-double, like for speeding, you get double fines in school zone. So I'd like to know where that's at.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Is there a specific request in there?
Well, if they know now and if they don't, they can get it back to us on it.
Okay, so we'll ask administration to follow up on that. Councilor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe the motion is highly appropriate. I think that unless you can, city council can't stop parking lots from going onto school sites, and that's kind of the only authority that we are looking at. Sorry, I'm having a hard time wording this, it's been a long day. That's the level of authority that we would have, and you can't do that as a broad stroke across the city. So the motion is to allow flexibility in that development permit, and that development permit would be site-specific. So basically, what we'd be telling administration is that if another site was chosen, they could just apply the permit for that other site. And then we'll leave it up to the school board and the school to determine what is an appropriate site, as they consult with the public. As we all know, school boards are also elected, just like we are. We shouldn't really be getting in their business, especially since we've already allowed them to exist within a. to exist within our city.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor McLean?
You, Councilor Wong, but also this new school that's six years old, half the capacity is modular now, so it's sort of really changed the outlook of speed in that area and outcome of residents getting in and out. And I understand not stepping on the school board's decision, but now this is going full circle and it'll go back to the province. And so I understand where you're heading at that, but also this is like double capacity in the school. We got sizes of schools and modulars, so it's really changed the outlook in this area. So I think it's important on council to look at other directives as well.
Okay, thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. And once the new school opens, there are an awful lot of those students and teachers and traffic may be from that area. They'll see a lot less, but we can't determine that until they get their registration and find out where they live and the enrollment area. So I'm confident that it will drop down because there's a new school in that area.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe, oh, there was one other delegation, South Peace Ball. They made a presentation, and we did deal with that item, but they made a presentation. I think probably should receive it for information if somebody cared to make that motion. Councilor, Councilor Crokin?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that we receive the South Peace Ball Association's report for information.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that handles all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion, and council members said that they had no reports or any of the reports that they had from the agencies, boards, and commissions that were on, they would handle in roundtable. And so we'll start the final roundtable of the council term to my far right with Councilor Wong, and then we'll go to Councilor Gustafson in round. Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. September 17th, I brought greetings on behalf of council and the mayor to the grand opening of Cora's Restaurant on South 40. It's going to be a great addition to the city. I think that there's already been massive lineups there. I know that last week I was assigned to line up for some friends of mine, and I was there for about an hour with a bunch of other people before we got through those doors. Also, on September 17th, I attended the municipal, intermunicipal government meeting with other members of council. September 18th, I attended the council committee of the whole strategic priorities chart review. September 20th, other members of council were also present at the municipal government board annexation preliminary hearing. It's good to see that process finally get underway. I was a little disappointed that a bunch of residents there were either misinformed or had lack of information about the annexation, and these are people that live in the annexation area. I think there were a few of us who were talking with those residents and dispelling a bunch of myths that they, or misconceptions that they had. September 20th, I was also at City Hall at an election night telecast meeting. I will be the official analyst and commentator for the election night results, so hope to see a lot of friendly faces walk through that door after the election. September 23rd, I was at Duke's in Mingles on Main for the announcement that the Sawmill Restaurant will be opening in the spring of 2014 in that location. Great to see that as well. September 26th, I was at a Wapiti Corridor Planning Society meeting. It was basically a wrap-up meeting. It's been a long process. We've taken five years to finally create this land use plan that is pretty much ready to be submitted to the provincial government. We've planned one last meeting after the final, final draft is printed, which is happening right away. Can't wait. That's been a long time in my life. We did, we did that right from scratch. I think I got suckered in by, by the reeve of the county. She basically said, hey, you like running in the County of Grand Prairie, right? We should, we should talk about these trails and some recreation down there. So she shuffled me off to this meeting, and five years later, a lot of work has been done, but council's gonna, gonna be really proud of the plan that was created. What else? Oh, later that day, I was also at another election night telecast meeting. I still have a few more of those. We're preparing all the new technology, and Fred Rennie and I are kind of getting all our background information together, so it should be a good night. September 27th, I was at the kickoff for the Alberta Culture Days. And finally, today, it's on September 30th, it was another council committee of the whole meeting.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Well, another chapter's closed. This is the last time you guys are going to hear me complain or do anything here as, as we close this final term. I'd really take, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my family and my charming wife for allowing me the opportunity to be an alderman and a councillor. You know, I'd like to thank CLT, David Allinger, thanks for your time, especially in the first term, helping me out there, and Gary Roth, Greg Scherbach, Mr. Anderson, and Mrs. Ferguson has really, really been near and dear to my heart over the, over the past six years, and especially you guys around the table here. Most, most people don't realize the, how much, how much commitment and how much you guys, his heart is really in building and creating a great place to live. And on that, in the next term, as you guys get re-elected, I'm hoping you spend some time focusing on our transportation network, our roads, and our fixing our roads, and you heard tonight about our schools, some, really spend some time on concentrating on our educational needs for our future. And Mayor Given, thank you for being such a good mayor. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Rice?
Tough act to follow. I attended the intermunicipal meeting as well. I think it was one of the best intermunicipal meetings. I, I think the true spirit of cooperation amongst the region was very evident that night. Attended the announcement at Mingles of the Sawmill coming to Grand Prairie, and it's always a pleasure when people have decided to make a significant investment in our community. I attended the Peace River Community Advisory Committee luncheon where they brought us up to date on, on that project. And I attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at the new Atco building, which until then I had no idea of the, the variety of services that they provide for all of Alberta out of that building. It's, it's very impressive. And I attended the Alberta Culture Days kickoff with Minister Klimczek. And I attended the 20-year anniversary of Victoria's Attic where Councilor Gustafson got to show off his barbecuing skills. So I want to say that it's, both Councilor Wong and Councilor Gustafson will be missed. Their contribution to this council has been huge. I also point out that the Alberta, Alberta Recycling Management Authority has allocated a million dollars in funding for the municipal assistance program, so that will be for the next year.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On the September 17th, I attended the Pursuit of Excellence meeting. Later that day, I attended the intermunicipal meeting at the County Games Arena. Very, very good meal put on by the hosts there. On September the 18th, I attended the Big Brothers and Big Sisters BBQ downtown, and later the strategic priorities meeting. And then later, again, the Canadian Home Builders Association GP Mixer at our Service Center. And I ended up having a friend when I won the prize. Isn't that something? On the 19th, I attended the United Way Campaign kickoff luncheon at Mad Hatters. And then on the 19th, I attended the Atco Ribbon Cutting grand opening, and there were some nice door prizes there, and they sent me away with one. And on the 20th, I also attended the Itzalona in the Pomeroy Hotel, the annexation meeting and hearing. And later that day, I ended up at the Showcase Center. Wine and cheese there was very good. On the 22nd, I attended a funeral for a great city builder and a father of one of our councillors, Rodney Radburn. On the 23rd, I attended a meeting with City Manager Review, and then at lunch, we attended the Peace Country Community Advisory for Enbridge luncheon and meeting. That was a very good eye-opener for all people concerned. Then later, of course, on the 23rd was on Mingles at Main and met the owner that's going to be putting the Sawmill downtown. And 26th, I was also at the Atco again. There was a mixer, and somehow I got another door prize. On the 27th, I attended the Alberta Culture Days kickoff at the provincial building. And I'm telling you, we got some talent in town. There was dancing from one, two, three, four different groups, and they really showed off their stuff. The 27th, later that day, whoa, that was at lunchtime. The Candice Keir asked me to stop to the, at the ATB 75th Year Celebration on Kateri Drive, and I didn't really want to go there for lunch, but I did stop in. And on the 28th, I also attended the ribbon cutting for 20 years, 20 years of Victoria's Attic downtown, and congratulations, Alec, to your wife. I'm sure you don't buy too much in there, but. And on the 29th, I attended a barbecue downtown, or in the Muscat CP Park in Arjil for the Grand Prairie District Labor Council in support of communities homeless and unemployed. It was an awful lot of people there. It was well-attended. And then today also, I attended the community committee of, meeting of the whole. And I do have some roses and raspberries. The roses, I have been, I've been told by a number of people that are paving and are sidewalks, probably has been the best that they have seen. Weather, of course, has been in our favor, and we do that with limited resources, I might add. And my raspberries will go to Highway 43, the potholes that I mentioned a little earlier to Minister Drysdale. That is in the city of Grand Prairie, but it's not our responsibility. So if we could help them in any way, we do have some great staff, we could fix that for them real easy. And with that, I'd just like to say I really enjoyed my three years with all of you and looking forward to seeing you on the next term. That's everything. Mayor Given?
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On the 17th, I attended a Nighthawk Recreation Area Board Meeting. Not a lot to report there, except that the Nighthawk area, I mean, a lot of our equipment is getting up in age these days, so the maintenance costs associated with maintaining, you know, the lifts and all the equipment out there is, is becoming fairly difficult to manage, and just wanted everyone to be aware of that, because I'm sure there'll be more coming soon on that. On the 18th, I quickly attended the Gudan Pencil and DVD Release Party at the Little Theatre, and that was, she's into herbal pharmacy medicines and stuff, and it seemed really quite unique, actually. There was quite a few people there to take it in, then, alternative medicine. Couldn't stay for the full, full event, as I was off to the Canadian Home Builders Association Mixer hosted by our Service Center. Once again, good to see the home builders there. And then after that, I went and took in the citizen satisfaction survey at the Teresa Sergeant Hall. Good turnout there, and some excellent feedback in regards to the survey that had been done a couple months earlier. I guess also that day, I was at the Big Brothers and Big Sisters BBQ downtown, one of the more expensive lunches I've had, because Vernon Boyd hit me up for a hundred-dollar ticket on the WestJet Fly Anywhere lottery thing. So anyways, maybe I'll win a trip out of it, I'm not sure. The 19th, attended the United Way kickoff at Mad Hatters, and wow, they are really setting the target high this year. $1.3 million is the goal, and wow, I hope, I hope they make it. So they had great momentum last year, and I'm sure they'll be able to do it this year. Also attended the ribbon cutting at Echo Electric. On the 20th, attended the municipal government board annexation preliminary hearing. And then on the 22nd, went and took in the AIDS Walk down in Muscat CP Park, and actually walked the two-kilometer walk with a, with a number of folks there, and beautiful day for a walk around the park. 23rd, went to the Enbridge Peace Country Community Advisory Board Lunch, and later on that day, was also present at Mingles Down on Main, and congratulations to Tom Goodchild, and look forward to him opening up the new Sawmill. And the 26th, attended the Poverty, Provincial Poverty Reduction Strategy, just the morning part of that, and got a glimpse into what that strategy is. And then later on that day, I was at the Chamber of Commerce Mixer, also out at the Atco building. That's it, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the 17th, I attended the 100th Anniversary Committee. We had a bunch of people around the table talking about all the projects they're working on, and my project is to get events for most of the year, so it's coming along pretty good. At 5:00, I set out a bag of food for the Rotary Food Bank collection, and it's gone, so it's going somewhere. Intermunicipal Government Day at, later that night, like it was said earlier today, most of the council was there, and it was a very well-run meeting with lots of good discussion. On the 18th, I attended the Combatant Sports Commission. We had our discussion regarding the promoter and overturned the decision. Later on, we had had the Strategic Priorities Chart here at City Hall, and we went over our priorities for the next four months, three months for sure. Later that night, I also attended with Councilor Monroe a good run pencil and DVD release. And while we were there, we also got a tour of some of the upgrades to the Grand Prairie Live Theater, including the sound and lighting and some of the additions that they did to the building itself. Once again, didn't stay there as long as I wanted to be, but we had the Canadian Home Builders Mixer at the Service Center, attended the citizen satisfaction. And the 19th, I had the Airport Commission Meeting. Some of the topics of discussion there were the traffic lights that was announced and the airport master plan. We reviewed some of those. We got to have a quick look at the employee policy manual and capital plan and financial report. On the, what else we got? Ribbon Cutting Ceremony at the Atco later that day. And, hang on here, cowboy. And on the 20th, I attended the South Peace Regional Archives Strategic Planning Event. It was an all-day affair, and we've got some good ideas out there on where we want to go with the whole Archives program. I was at... Wasn't there. Sorry, I'm trying to get this high-techy stuff, and then I upgraded my computer and shouldn't have done that. Where are we at here? The, on the, on the 23rd, I was down here at City Hall to start the campaign for the next four years, got to meet some of the people that are also running, not only for the city council, but the school boards as well. And we did the announcement at Mingles on Main once again, and... I was at the, on the 26th, I was at the Provincial Poverty Reduction I was at the, on the 26th, I was at the provincial poverty reduction. I spent the entire day there. It was quite interesting to see how different areas of the community feel about what needs to be done and who should be addressing it. Later that evening, I attended the primary care network. And it was held at the Paradise Inn Conference Center. And it was basically to showcase some of the agencies that the doctors and specialists deal with on a regular basis. And it was an eye-opener, some of the stuff that we do look after and the agencies and some of the programs that they actually offer. Cultural Days on the 27th, I also was at the provincial building in the Foray. And once again, hats off to the talent that was there. And that was great. Got Mayor Clemchuk, or sorry, MLA and Minister Clemchuk, Culture Minister, was there giving greetings. And also Mayor Given did an excellent speech. And that was great. And basically, that was pretty much it. I did attend the Victoria's Attic ribbon cutting ceremony for 20 years in business in the downtown. And congratulations. And once again, it's been a great three years. I enjoyed every minute of it. Some decisions were pretty tough to make. Some were pretty easy to make. And at the end of the day, I appreciate working with each and every one of you, both councillors and administration and the people that deal with the city on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. September 19th, airport commission meeting. 22nd, AIDS Walk, park admission. 23rd, council committee of the whole. And then the evening or in the late afternoon Duke Sawmill announcement. 25th, went to the Evergreen Park sponsorship announcement and the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association kiosk unveiling. 26th, provincial poverty reduction presentation and discussion for part of the day. And then I went to the primary care network panel presentation and the chamber mixer at Atco Electric. 27th, I went to Spirit River for Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee. And on the 28th, it was my honor to participate in the ribbon cutting for Victoria's Attic 20th Anniversary. And just to very quickly, to close, thank you to each of you who took the time to come to Dad's celebration of life and to support me, myself and my family. And especially to councillor Rice for participating in that celebration of life. And finally, it's been an honor to represent the citizens of Grand Prairie the last three years. And it's been a pleasure to serve with my colleagues and with city staff. And I wish everyone the best of luck. And I encourage everyone to get out to vote. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. September 17th, I chaired the Pursuit of Excellence Committee. And I just want to say thank you, Mayor Given, for making me a chair of that committee. I've earned an awful lot on that committee. On September 17th, I was also involved in intermunicipal government meeting. September 18th, I was also in council committee as a whole, strategic priority chart review. September 18th, I was also at the Canadian Home Builders Association mixer at the service center. September 18th, I was also at the community futures meeting. I do have one more next month. And I was glad because councillor Radburn brought up about the youth entrepreneurship camp, which we were rated number one in Canada three years in a row for entrepreneurship city area. September 19th, I was also at the, the grand opening of the new Atco Electrical Building. I believe it was an $80 million building. And what I want to say about that, I was talking to one of the bosses and they said they built this building. I said, this building, I would love to work in this building. Just the feeling as an employee. And he said, we built this to stop retention, to keep people within and to stay with us in the long term. And they built a beautiful building. September 20th, I was also at the Pomeroy for the annexation open house, the first preliminary debate. And September 23rd, I was also at city hall for council committee on city management review. And I just want to say, Greg, you're a very good city manager. And I was very proud to work, work with you. And you've done a very, very good job. September 23rd, I also attended tech center of the Peace Country Community Advisory Board on the Northern Gateway Pipeline. September 23rd, I was also at the, the grand opening of Joe's Dukes, which they'll have in six or eight months of the announcement of the Sawmill Restaurant. If you've ever eaten there, it is some of the best prime rib in Alberta. September 25th, I went to the Rising Above BBQ. They were hoping to raise a hundred thousand dollars. And at the time when I left, it was around 20,000. So I don't know if they got their goal. I hope they did. And I just want to say, this has been one of the most respectful group I've ever worked with. And I got to live a dream. And it's a job I truly loved. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. I won't report on any, any of the items I've attended over the last little while. I would just take an opportunity to say thank you very much to my colleagues on council, to administration for the work that we've done as a team. And I mean that both council and administration as a team over the course of the last three years. I think we've been engaged in very foundational work that will ultimately be beneficial to our community. Some of that's behind the scenes. Some of it's things that the general public won't see day in and day out. But I believe all of it is stuff that we can be proud of. I know that I'm certainly proud of my term as mayor. And I'm very proud of the team that I had to serve with. I think we accomplished a lot. And I want to thank each and every one of you for that. I want to say a special thanks and goodbye to councillor Wong and councillor Gustafson. It's been a pleasure to serve with both of you for the past six years. I'm not sure that everybody in the public realizes the dedication that it takes to commit to council. And each of you have put in a significant amount of time and adjusted your lives accordingly. And I certainly appreciate you doing that and wish you the best as you refocus on the rest of your life. And we know that the city will always be close to your hearts. And we appreciate the commitment that you've made to, to our community over the past near decade. So thanks very much with that, with those words of thanks. And then thanks also to the community for the opportunity to represent you. I'll close this last council meeting of this term. Thanks very much.